I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its representative institutions, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated.
Roll call, please.
Councilman, Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Oro?
Here.
Councilmember Joseph?
Here.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Thank you. Now we move on to report on closed session confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, your council convened in open session at 4:35 PM, all members except the mayor, to ascertain if there were any comments on matters agendized for closed session consideration. One was mentioned, and after that, the council adjourned to closed session at 4:36 PM. With respect to agenda item number one, there was action and direction given to staff, but that action and direction is not reportable, action under the provisions of Government Code Section 54957.6. With respect to agenda item number two, there were three matters considered under closed session with respect to potential litigation, and as to each of those measures, there was no reportable action under the common law attorney-client privilege, and that provided by Government Code Section 54956.9D2. With respect to closed session, agenda item number three, there is no reportable action under the common law attorney-client privilege, and that provided by Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Excuse me. Finally, with respect to closed session item number four, there was no reportable action under the provisions of Government Code Section 54956.8, closed session concluded at 6:15 PM. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions, council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ross, we'll move on with the agenda. This evening we have proclamations and presentation, we're all very pleased to hear our presentation from Park and Recreation Month, July 2022.
So sorry.
There we go. All right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alexandra Iketa, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director here for the City of American Canyon. This month, along with the California Parks and Recreation Society, also referred to as CPRS, and the National Recreation Park Association, also referred to as NRPA, we are recognizing July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month here in the City of American Canyon. The City of American Canyon's Parks and Recreation Department is committed to enhancing the quality of life for AmCany residents, and we play a significant role in shaping the character of our community through engaging, fun, enriching, and dynamic parks and recreation programs and services. We promote physical, emotional, and mental health through organized and self-directed fitness, play and activity through programs, our parks, trails, and open space where we have running, hiking, and biking. We strengthen our community's identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate our community's character and diverse heritage and culture. We foster social cohesiveness by celebrating diversity, providing a space to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, and connecting social networks and ensuring all people feel welcome and have access to our community's benefits. We create memorable experiences by offering a wide variety of programs and services that meet a multi-generational community and by providing exciting and engaging free community events that represent and support all the people who live, work, and play here in the City of American Canyon. And we sustain and steward our natural resources by protecting habitats and sensitive species within our open spaces, connecting people with nature, and promoting the ecological function of our parklands. And lastly, we support the economic vitality of this community by partnering and supporting our local businesses and nonprofit organizations with their community programs, services, and events. So we strive to enrich the lives of American Canyon community members through our positive and fulfilling recreational experiences. It's easy to get caught up in all the hustle and bustle of everyday life and forget to remember to take time for yourself. Don't worry, we have you covered. We have something for everyone, from water exercise to lap swim, to sports and fitness classes, our parks and open spaces to bike, hike, and run, our picnic reservations to host your family get-togethers and celebrations, and teaching lifesaving skills through our swim lesson program and CPR and first aid classes. So far this summer, we have registered over 2,800 participants, and we anticipate this number to grow as our summer continues until August 13th. On top of all of the great programs and services that we offer, we also have some amazing community events coming up. On July 22nd, we have our Movies in the Park, where we are going to be featuring Disney's Shang-Chi and the Legend of the Ten Rings at Community Park Two. On July 30th, we have our Smores and Meteors Event, which is going to be hosted at the Wetlands from 8:30 to 12:00 AM. I know that's really late, it's going to be past my bedtime, but I'm going to have fun. And August 5th, our Parent Getaway, which is wizard-themed. And on August 10th, we have our Second Movie in the Park at North Hampton Park, which is going to follow the Chambers Meet Me in the Streets event, and we're going to be featuring Disney's Encanto. And then also on August 10th, we are going to be hosting a cornhole tournament, so please, if you'd like to register for that, you can register online, that's going to be held during the event from 5:30 to 8:00. And then on August 13th, we have our Water Carnival, we're bringing that back this year at the Philip West Aquatic Center from 1:30 to 5:00. And on September 17th, we have our Annual Coastal Cleanup Day from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. You can register to volunteer if you would like to participate in that event. And then in December, we can't forget about our Magic of the Season. More details are to follow on that one. Recognizing July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of American Canyon is an opportunity for our community and our local leadership to officially acknowledge the importance of Parks and Recreation and the benefits it provides to the people we serve. We are committed to enhancing our community's quality of life by helping others to be happy and healthy, build relationships, connect with nature, and continue to be an integral part of our community. As we rise up to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month, I would really like to take this time to thank our staff, our dedicated staff, who show up every single day and who work very hard, and they're dedicated and they have their passion and drive to serve this community. And I would also like to thank our park staff who help us make sure our parks and our facilities are clean and maintained for us to be able to do our programs and services there. I am honored to be a part of this team, and I thank you all for your help, and yay for Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Particularly like the Smores and Meteors, you know, they get way out there where it's really dark, they've got some huge telescopes, and you can actually see the moons on Saturn through the telescope, so that's a cool one. Thank you, I look forward to all the events, I'm sure we all do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be a presentation on Local Roadway Safety Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. And members of public, Erica Almond Smithy is Public Works Director. Here tonight with GHD Consultants, who is assisted with our Local Roadway Safety Plan. We have a presentation of their data-driven information, the comments they received, and the public outreach survey. Kathryn Klinschmidt should be on hybrid here, presenting here shortly, I'm going to work with City Clerk Gelfus. Kathryn's done quite a bit of these, I'll let her speak for herself, but she's a Senior Traffic Project Manager, Senior Traffic Engineer with GHD, so if we bear with us the technical assistance here, that'd be great.
We're bringing her over. She looks just like Miriam.
We've got a crew here tonight.
Okay, I think I just joined, can you hear me? Okay, good, I'm going to share my screen.
I can't hear you. Need something on the audio for the presentation.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Appreciate the introduction, Erica. Kathryn Klinschmidt with GHD, presenting the Local Roadway Safety Plan for the City of American Canyon. We're presenting tonight to get feedback from council.
Why don't we pause for a moment, too, we're just trying to get the audio.
Kathryn, can you hold for a minute?
Yeah.
Sure, sorry.
That's a technical problem on our side.
Trying to increase your volume.
Okay, Kathryn, if you could give it a try, and also try to speak closer to your mic.
Okay, can you hear me now? Is that better?
It's still pretty low.
Is it? Maybe I should put on a headset, let me. If you don't mind, I'm going to put on a headset and see if that can help, hold on.
Okay, thank you.
Can you guys hear me when I speak? Because I hear Kathryn just fine, so it might be a TV issue on your side.
I think it's our side, because Miriam sounds about the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can hear Kathryn very well.
So it's on our end.
So the headset might not work better, is what I'm hearing.
Well, if you sit close to the mic and be very loud, feel free.
Okay, I've got my headset on, is that any better?
That's better.
Okay.
Yes, that's good.
We're going to make this work, I'm determined.
Right on.
All right, welcome, everyone. Mayor Garcia, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Kathryn Klinschmidt, I'm presenting the Local Roadway Safety Plan for information tonight, for your feedback, and then we'll most likely be coming back for council adoption in about a month. So tonight, I'm just showing you the overall process as it is. I'm going to go over the background, the safety partners that we had throughout this development of the plan, as well as, as Erica mentioned, it's a data-driven plan, so we have collision analysis, I'll show, we're currently doing public engagement on the public website, and then as well as I'll get into some safety projects. So the reason why the city is doing the Local Roadway Safety Plan is the way the money is coming down from the federal government, they require the state of California to have the Strategic Highway Safety Plan adopted every five years, and now Caltrans is requiring each agency to have a Local Roadway Safety Plan adopted by the governing board to be eligible for the next cycle of Highway Safety Improvement Program funding, which is Cycle 11, which is right now out for, has a call for projects. So this is very relevant to the funding that's currently available for this city. The overall process is you establish your leadership, you look at your safety data, determine emphasis areas, and then look at ways to prioritize and incorporate those strategies. And then this plan is typically updated every five years to kind of coincide with also the five-year of the Strategic Highway Safety Plan for the state. Now here is the five E's of traffic safety, this is from the state's plan, so not only are we looking at engineering countermeasures, but we're also working with your police department, your fire department, making sure there's enforcement stuff in place, as well as we're maintaining emergency response. But there's also a lot of things that can't be engineered out, you have to educate the public, so that's another component of it, and then emerging technologies with some of these intelligent transportation systems. So we did form a stakeholder working group with the city, Napa County, Caltrans District Four, because you have that major, you know, state highway going through your city, State Route 29, as well as the police department, the fire department, Napa Valley Transportation Authority, Napa Valley Bicycle Coalition, and your school districts. So we did form this working group, and we've already held two different meetings. The first meeting, we discussed the overall process, as well as we looked at all the collision data and determined our emphasis areas based on the collision data, as well as all the different feedback from stakeholders. We really want to focus on bicycle-to-vehicle collision, pedestrian-to-vehicle collisions, intersections, distracted driving, as well as aggressive driving, which is also speeding falls under that. On our second meeting, we looked at the public comments, we discussed some of the guiding principles that will kind of guide the plan, as well as looked at safety projects and countermeasures. Next step, we're going to put the draft LRSP on the website for feedback from the public and stakeholders. So we have a vision and a mission statement, still, you know, accepting input, but our vision is complementing Vision Zero. City of American Canyon will strive towards the elimination of all traffic fatalities, severe injuries, while increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. And how we're going to get there is we're going to provide a safe, sustainable, and equitable multimodal transportation system for all users. There's also goals that we've set up, that kind of, they're, you know, data-driven with the collision data, we noticed a lot of rear ends on State Route 29, so we wanted to have a goal to help reduce that, as well as we want to reduce fatal and severe injury collisions. We want to also reduce some of the broadside collisions on the city jurisdictional roadways, as well as improve the multimodal transportation safety, and look at a contact-sensitive design, and then also improve safety around the schools with enhanced multimodal infrastructure crossings and education enforcement. So we did look at your past five years of collisions, 2017 to 2021, and this is for the City of American Canyon, including State Route 29. We are noticing on State Route 29, the majority of your collisions are at the intersections, so that's where the issues are, as well as on your city roadway jurisdictional roads, you're having more collisions on the intersection, so we're focusing in on some of these hotspots, too. These are where the collision densities are occurring, and you're starting to see American Canyon Road is starting to pop, State Route 29 at the different intersections, so we're focusing in on some of those areas. Now, these slides are separating out the city jurisdictional roadways versus Caltrans, so we're going to start to see the trends versus, you know, the state highway and the city roads. And when we looked at the past five, there were two fatals and five severe injuries on your city-owned roadways, so we really want to focus on how to mitigate those. The majority of the collisions were property damage only. And then when you start looking at the collision type, the majority were sideswipe, followed by broadside and hit objects, so we want to focus in on what is causing those type of collisions and countermeasures we can implement. And then you also see the vehicle-to-pedestrian collisions at 16. And just to let you know, the bicycle collisions we'll look at coming up, but they are coded in with the other, per the California Vehicle Code. State Route 29, we're starting to also see the trends on there. State Route 29 also had two fatals and 10 severe injuries within the City of American Canyon, and we're seeing more injury collisions, less property damage, and overall more injury collisions. This one was the kind of a telltale sign, the majority of the type of collisions that are occurring are rear end, and a lot of that happens with speed differential, a lot of congestion, you know, different things that kind of cause the stop and go. So we, you know, are working with Caltrans to see what kind of things they're implementing, and then there was four vehicle-to-pedestrian collisions on there. Focusing on fatal and severe injury, these are the locations that they were occurring at the intersections on State Route 29, we're starting to see them here at Green Island, Rio Del Mar, Poco Way, and American Canyon Road, as well as we're seeing severe injuries along American Canyon Road at Foston Broadway, as well as Rio Del Mar. So this is also just kind of showing the breakdown of how those are occurring, some were vehicle-to-pedestrian, some were cited as broadside, rear end, so we're delving into the data. Now, this is pedestrian-to-vehicle collision, so some of those severe injuries are going to be shown here as pedestrian-related, and this one is showing some at night and day at Rio Del Mar, as well as in American Canyon Road. What we're noticing is there's a trend with where those collisions are occurring, the pedestrians are crossing in the crosswalk at the intersection, so we want to try and make improvements at the intersections in giving the pedestrians more of a, you know, less exposure to vehicles. Bicycle collisions, one of the fatals on State Route 29 was a bicycle collision at night due to improper turning, and then there was a severe injury on American Canyon. We're seeing some of them were due to the wrong side of the road, so that could be an education component. So these are some of the data that we started to delve into. So we also wanted to engage the public, because sometimes not everything is evident through the data, with the collision data, and the public might notice some areas that are concerned that might not be popping collision data. So the city has it on the red website here, and you can see Local Roadway Safety Plan, you hit that button, and then you go to our website. We're collecting comments through an interactive map that will be live till the end of this month, as well as we have a project survey, and one of the questions in the project survey is asking about your traffic calming guidelines, because there was a workshop on May 19th that kind of sent them to the website, and we wanted to get some input, as the city is currently working to update those guidelines. And this is kind of showing you kind of the traffic to the website, when the city kind of advertised it through the social media outlets, the different workshops where they noticed, they made a blurb about it, some of the council meetings, we are getting traffic, so that's good. We've, I mean, I've done a lot of these local road safety plans, and to, you know, for a city this size to get 151 interactive map comments and 41 survey responses, that's actually a good response. So I think overall, we are collecting a lot of comments, and we're addressing them, and they'll all be summarized in the LRSP appendix, as well as incorporated as needed. Now, this is showing you a heat map of where we are getting kind of the concentration of comments, and it's interesting to see that Elliott Drive, or Elliott Way, excuse me, between Benton Way and American Canyon, we're starting to see a hotspot here. This is kind of another parallel route to State Route 29, but it's also by your middle school there, and there was concerns of speeding, people not yielding to pedestrians in the crosswalks, not obeying the stop signs, so that one lit up, as well as there's a part of James Way here that also lit up, and, you know, James Way goes down along here, and also parallel State Route 29, but it kind of ends up around Donaldson Road, but that little short stretch up there, they were also complaining of speeds, and, you know, people not knowing where they're going, so that one started to pop, as well as we're seeing some around Melvin, Wetlands Edge, and then over here on Newell Road, so we're looking at where those are occurring. The majority of the comments were driving comments, but we also have got a good mix of biking and pedestrian comments. So I'm just going to kind of give you an overview of what the city's doing currently, because we want to complement what the city is currently doing, and then we'll go into some recommended countermeasures that naturally feed into the Highway Safety Improvement Program, since this is a requirement for that program, we typically feed into those kind of countermeasures. So as you're probably aware, Devlin, excuse me, Devlin Road was recently completed, Vine Trail Extension, it's going to be probably closed out coming up in a month, and this kind of helps your circulation overall, distributes the traffic, and it also has a roundabout there at Boone Drive, and has a Class 1 path, as well as there's another project that's underway, and it's where Green Island Road down here, it's kind of showing it here, Devlin kind of ties in right about there, they're looking at updating the signal crossings, railroad crossing reconstruction, and the Class 1 multi-use trail, that Napa Valley Vine Trail. Watson Ranch is also a major development project, it's been in the works, and it's got a lot of safety improvements with it, with some sort of, you know, speed management at the intersections with the roundabouts, pedestrian crossing enhancements, as well as the bicycle paths. As well as the city's got that traffic calming program, recently installed speed cushions on Wetlands Edge, and then I believe there's another request coming up that the city is working on, I believe it's for Melvin, as well as the city's doing a lot of education components, and the bike radio with Napa Valley Bicycle Coalition, as well as child seat and bike helmet. Here, this is the Kittle Mass, that actually is, you know, it's got your police department, as well as Parks and Rec, I know, come out for that, too, so good shout-out for them, too, you know, and helping in kind of getting that safety out there about cycling, and as well as, you know, helping get the bikes in good shape, and, you know, there's a community safety booklets, there's other things they offer here, some of the stuff on the website. Another thing we want to point out is the Broadway District-specific plan is ongoing, but it was recently approved in July 2019 after a 10-year process, so all these are kind of, you know, safety things that are currently going and guiding some of the development in your city. There is an update to your traffic calming guidelines going on, as well as there's projects through the American Rescue Plan Act, Benton Way Enhanced Crosswalk, the Class 2 Bike Lanes Improvement, Elliott Drive, Melvin Road Sidewalk and Drainage, and then some utility and paving improvements, all going to have some safety components. Here's just a couple I'm just highlighting right now, your Class 2 Bike Lanes and Crosswalks at Silver Oak Trail, as well as Donaldson Way and Shenanda Drive, and then as well as a Elliott Drive Enhanced Crosswalk. And you probably are aware, there is also another project, very large one, on State Route 29, MVTA is leading that, and that is looking at how to reevaluate that corridor for improvements. The project initiation document through Caltrans is almost done, and then it'll be going through project approval and environmental document phase, and so eventually they're wanting to get some improvements along that corridor that can really make some substantial changes. Through our data analysis, we've got intersections that we've selected as priorities within the city, there's some along State Route 29, as well as we've got other priority intersections at Foston, Flosden Road, American Canyon, Rio Del Mar, you know, I'm not going to read them all out, and as well as your segments that started to pop, you can see them all kind of highlighted here, Newell Drive, American Canyon Road, Paoli Loop Road, and then also Silver Oak and Benton Way. Some of these were data-driven, some were recommended by stakeholders and public as well. As I mentioned, these are just some of the countermeasures that kind of feed into HCP. We're looking at your signalized locations, ways we can improve the safety by improving the signal hardware, doing some of those retro reflective backpates, as well as, you know, the indication size, some of them are deficient, upsizing from 8-inch to 12-inch, adding more signal heads per lane, as well as looking at the overall signal timing, how do you coordinate that, as well as, you know, making sure all your red and yellow clearance intervals are meeting standards, and then as well as looking at modifying the phasing to implement a leading pet interval. That will give the pedestrians five seconds before the vehicles have the right-of-way, so they establish a presence in the crosswalk, and it is really proven to enhance safety. And there are two signals that currently have that on State Route 29 at Donaldson Way.
I feel like an experienced bike rider, used to ride my bike in San Francisco and downtown San Francisco. So I feel like I know what I'm doing, but it's still a little hairy. The side of the road is full of just junk, tidbits of glass, rock, you know, who else knows what's there? And then cars go by pretty quick. Fortunately, it was at five o'clock this afternoon, so everybody was going southbound, and I was going northbound, was a little bit less. But I actually prefer traffic on the road because everybody slowed down. And I have, you know, that road is a highway, I can ride my bike on it, but I get to the Walmart intersection and people need to take a right. You know, I know that I can take that lane and I take it so the car behind me knows to slow down rather than trying to cut me off, and I'll make it through that light. But, you know, I could see not everybody's gonna do that, right? But everybody would ride their bike if they felt safer, and I'm hoping we can begin to consider that and really get people outside of our cars. Last year I had a parent reach out to me complaining about the traffic, dropping their kids off at the middle school, and, because they're dropping them off in a car. You live less than a mile away, why aren't you walking there? Why aren't you telling the kid to take a bike? I mean, we need to do that, and people aren't doing that because they don't feel safe. And we should be moving towards that. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, I'll be brief. One, thank you for that presentation, Catherine, I thought it was an outstanding presentation. I agree with councilmember Oral about the green stripings, but I think it's our responsibility on the council to reach out to the community, to get involved with the link that you have provided for the city, to add that input as well. I think that's really important. And to confirm, I've seen councilmember Oral ride his bike several times, I didn't know how many points I would get if I hit him, so I avoided hitting him.
I was coming from City Hall when you saw me, too.
I know you were, I know you were. But it brings pleasure to see this type of report, because I recall one of the residents who was here tonight, Beth Marcus, mentioning about Rio del Mar, how dangerous of an intersection that is. So from that one day that you spoke to us on the council, I'm glad to see that something like this is being looked at and presented to us and to the residents. But I just encourage the residents to take advantage of those surveys, so your voices can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I might add one thing to consider in terms of just using bicycles more frequently. We're a bike racks, you know, there's one small one there at Starbucks, there at the shopping center there. I've been told also by family members, you know, kids like to go over and buy an ice cream or something, but Safeway, but there's no place to park your bike. Maybe we ought to look into where we have bike racks around where we have that type of retail, and see what might be able to add more to that. Something where you can lock your bike. We have one right here at City Hall parking lot, something like that.
Yeah, I can confirm there's not enough bike lock places, particularly at that Safeway intersection, it's far away and hidden.
Okay, anything further?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if that's okay?
Vice Mayor Alvedamos, yes.
Thank you. I apologize if it's a silly question, but please indulge me. So I understand that we are, NVTA is working on the PID and traffic improvement and all sorts of projects, and so is this report gonna go to NVTA, or what happens with this document, these reports that you're working on? Is it just information for us? You said you're working with Caltrans, so I'm hoping it's not just information for us. But what's, procedurally, what's gonna happen with this document?
Next step, we're gonna be also, so honestly, it's gonna be published, the draft reports will be published online, and then we are going to go to Planning Commission next week, so it's again aired publicly, try to get more comments, because the survey closes on Friday of next week, the 29th. And then we'll come back to council for adoption, hopefully. And then, we can't apply for any grant funding until we can get an adopted plan, so that's the goal here, is that we set ourselves up to get sufficient grant funding to do one or more of these traffic improvement projects that are slated in the plan. And a year from now, NVTA will be doing a Vision Zero Plan, a county-wide plan update. So this will hopefully reduce their costs and our cost share to doing something like that, they don't get funded, and they can take our data and build from theirs.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one other thing, that was a great question, Vice Mayor. And NVTA is a stakeholder, part of this process, giving input, and yeah, I think the plan is, it's catered for your local agency, for your city, but it's important to engage all the stakeholders, because as well as we want all the puzzles to fit in the end, you know, we want what we're recommending on State Route 29 to kind of complement what efforts are already being done.
Well, thank you. And also, Mr. Mayor, this is for you, because I'm not sure if you can see the Zoom screen. I know we don't typically do public comment for our presentations, but we do have a hand up, so I'm not sure if the council wanted to listen to the public comment.
Oh, do we have a public hand up? I'm not seeing it.
We do, Mayor Garcia, I was just getting ready to push the light button for you.
Thank you, Teresa, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I did have one more thing to add for the number of the public answers, is that I missed it on the power deck, but we do, or the slide deck, is that we do have our We Heart Safer Streets campaign, we have flyers out here, handouts, if you please take one tonight as you leave. But part of that is the Safe Streets pledge, and councilmember Washington has already taken the pledge for the city, and I think we have an ambassador, there might be others that have signed up as well, but this is new, this was brought up at the May 19 Traffic Coming Workshop. We now have the flyers, our goal was to get out to the PTOs and the school district to hand these out, as our Bike and Roll Month will come in September, so a big plug and public outreach push with the school starts up, so.
I see the bicycle rodeo as well, bicycle safety, yeah.
Get the parents on board, get our community on board, so, because we're part of the problem and solution. So with that, I'm sorry.
If y'all just wanna hear the public comment?
Okay, I'm going to call Chris James, just a moment. Chris, go ahead.
Hi, this evening, thanks for letting me speak in the second, you know, it's not normal to do that sometimes. Anyway, I'll keep this brief. I wanted to start off by saying, you know, I really appreciate all the hard work going into this, I do appreciate our council members who, you know, are out there on their bicycles and walking the streets and talking to people, and then just trying to understand the bigger problem here. I do think we're all moving in the same direction right now, and I think it's a really important topic to be discussing like this. Our city is almost perfect, like David said, it's like a, it's a perfect city, it's almost flat, it's in a great, you know, matrix. You know, I walk, I hike, I run and bike the city almost every day, I do do it every day, the length of the city. So I do appreciate that, I would like to see more dedicated bike lanes, not just striping, but, you know, segregated bike lanes. American Canyon Road is prime for it, there's a lot of room there that we could, you know, put some, something in there. I like the idea someone brought about more speed signs and flashing signs for the speeding. I was pointed out by a city worker that we can actually collect data from those signs. They all collect speed data, and we can actually, you know, we could actually see what our roads are doing without actually going into, you know, rumble strips or anything like that to try and figure out, you know, the strips you put into count cars, we can see them on the speed signs, they're already collecting the data. Talking about data as well, you know, that's, you know, I'm very data-driven, a lot of the stuff that, you know, I talk about is data-driven. And I know that we have a lot of collision data, but we miss a lot of these things. I know that there have been a number since Wetlands Edge Road, traffic collisions that were not reported, either reported to the police and not logged correctly and not on the report, I don't see, I've never seen them on report, like Alvin, Alvin's near miss and his dog getting killed, never showed up in any reports that I've seen recently. And other people backing into traffic from the driveways into cars, speeding down the street, so, and there's been incidents around the 4H, people crashing into barriers down there, people taking the corners too fast at the end. So data is really important, I think, and so I think we're going the right direction, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what comes out in the rest of those reports. But again, thank you for everyone for your hard work, and I'm really pleased to see that we're now using the words Vision Zero, I've been talking about it for three or four years now to the council, and I'm really glad that we're actually on the same page and all talking about Vision Zero. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Tammy Wong. Go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to give some feedback about this presentation. I always enjoy hearing what our city and our consultants are sharing to provide more safety for everyone who uses our roads and not just the drivers. I really like the point that councilmember Joseph made about anything that we can do to make our roads better for bicyclists and walkers, you know, that will just encourage their use. As someone who is riding my bicycle more, and as someone who's more of a casual rider, definitely feeling safe riding my bicycle in the streets is very important to me and something that I always think about when I'm writing. What I would like to ask, and this is for the point to encourage more kids to walk to school and bike to school, please look at this existing state law that allows city council to reduce the speed limit around schools to as low as 15 miles per hour. There are a lot of cities throughout California who have already done this, and this isn't something simple that you can already do just on your own, and I think by reducing it to 15 miles per hour, it just makes it safer for the kids who are walking or bicycling, and they have an unfortunate incident with a car, because the speed limit, because the car is going slower, less impact. So please think about that, and thank you for discussing this important topic, and I look forward to seeing this presentation again at Planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other hands raised.
Very good. Well, we thank you for the presentation, I think it's very good. I was just gonna say on the bicycle rodeo, the NVTA headed out these little bells, that a little lever you ring on your bike. Got one on mine, because when I ride on Wetlands Edge, that's a shared space, walk path, you know, I always like to let the person who may not hear me or see me coming, ring, ring. If I'm walking out there, sometimes I don't even hear the bike whizzes past, so I think there needs to be a little safety component there that might be able to give a pedestrian a heads up. And I always get a response when I ring the bell. Maybe they think it's the ice cream truck, I don't know. But there has to be a turnaround.
All good feedback.
Just something to add to a presentation, we might be able to get some of those cheap handout. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine.
Okay, we'll move on to our agenda. We have this portion now is ready for a public comment on items not on the agenda. Anybody wishing to comment, we ask you to limit your comment to three minutes. Those present can participate in this, or from home. Do we have anybody for a public comment?
Mayor Garcia, I have a speaker card for William Baker.
Yes, sir, this would be an item not on the agenda.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, the city council members and city manager. My name is William Baker, I'm a homeowner and resident of Montevino. I want to speak about a project the city of Vallejo is planning on our southern border. The Broadway Project is permanent supportive housing for the chronically homeless. Vallejo received funding from California's Home Key Program and is planning a four-story, 48-unit apartment building on the property line of our public park on Broadway. Unfortunately, the location of the Broadway Project is ill-conceived and destined to add cost and potentially spoil American Canyon's image as a safe place to live. While much needed and well-intended, the Home Key Project located next to our public park is set to increase American Canyon's police and fire coverage and cost. It also presents both reputational and legal liability risks for American Canyon, as this facility could provide permanent housing to convicted sex offenders directly adjacent to our neighborhood public park. Applications for housing at Home Key Projects are only required to prove homelessness. California law does not permit housing discrimination against convicted sex offenders. Twenty Home Key Projects today are already housing almost forty sex offenders across the state. This number is growing as more projects come online. Of the more than 160 approved Home Key Projects, the Broadway Project is the only one that sits directly adjacent to, or dare I say, touching, a neighborhood public park. Placing the Broadway Project on our border, Vallejo is forcing sharing the project's operational costs with American Canyon. For example, American Canyon's police already extensive patrolling requirements of this border area will only increase. And Vallejo's nearest fire station on Many Drive can not handle multi-story fires. The next closest fire station that can is ours on Donaldson Way. Like the current water dispute, this is another example of Vallejo's bullying tactics with its neighbors and its own citizens. I have door knock throughout Montevino area and also the bordering streets in Vallejo. I have also shared information about the project with those visiting our neighborhood park. No one I have met, including your constituents, is favorable towards this project, particularly as it has the real possibility of housing convicted sex offenders right next to our neighborhood public park. I present to the city council a copy of the current petition signed by American Canyon and Vallejo residents imposing this project at the Broadway location. I respectfully suggest the city undertake a risk and cost assessment by the police and fire department regarding the Broadway Project. I leave with you the words of a young, currently homeless Vallejo man, wrote on the enclosed petition, quote, "currently homeless," and still think it's a bad idea, end quote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other individuals here for a public comment on items not on the agenda? Any online? Anybody in the queue?
I have no hands raised.
Oh, we have Beth Marcus.
Beth Marcus, I just want to commend the city and park and recreation for a great Fourth of July event that we had. It's great that our city has all these free events that come up, and they're always so calm, peaceful, everybody gets along. But I'd like to suggest or strongly encourage that we go back to our, the way that we did it in the past, where you have the parade at 10, and it seems like we just have more camaraderie that way, you can get together for a longer period of time. I know there's a little bit of law in the day, but we always have entertainment and things that take up for that, but again, I just want to commend you and say thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have nothing.
No one in the queue? All right, very good, we'll move on with our agenda then. Next up is agenda changes. If there's any changes to the agenda, council, we also have our consent calendar, if there's no need for changes on that, then I'll accept a motion for receiving the consent calendar.
So moved, second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember, sorry, councilmember Oral?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvedamos?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council. Moving on, public hearings, there are no public hearings this evening. Moving on to our business items, item 13, 2022 National Community Survey Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and community, my name is Jen Kansenbeck, I'm the city's communications manager. I feel like I'm, I made it too short. I have to bend down. Okay, so I'm here tonight to talk about the National Community Survey. So tonight's presentation is gonna cover the basics of the survey and the key findings. The National Community Survey, which is better known as the NCS, report is about the livability of American Canyon. The survey was developed by National Research Center at Poco, formerly known as National Research Center Incorporated. And the city undertook this survey in early 2022, February and March, and we, the last time that we did this survey was back in 2015. Sorry, I'm holding my breath for some reason. So the entire report and all of the results, which is a ton of data, is accessible on our website at the address listed here. And as I said, we're just gonna cover some basics, and this report represents a snapshot in time, and of course, you can go on the website and drill down into all of the details that you would like to. So the NCS report reports out on the facets of community livability. So there's 10, sorry, for some reason I thought there's 11, but there is 10, there are 10 facets to community livability that they're assessing, and they're indicated here on this graphic. The survey was approximately half of our American Canyon households were randomly selected to participate, and during the invitation they received included mailed instructions that had English, Spanish, and Tagalog. They received multiple pieces of mail in the form of postcards and letters with multiple reminders inviting them to take the survey. So the, I'm sorry, they could take the survey in paper or online. So as far as the participation level, NCS, their goal for these surveys is to gather the opinions of a representative sample of the community. So for us in American Canyon, obviously, that's our residents, and they want to do that with a 5% margin of error, and we did meet that goal on the survey results. So as I said previously, the randomly selected sample participated by invitation only through an online survey and also through paper survey. So in addition to this, we also opened the survey to the entire community to participate, and that took place during a three-week period in March 2022. That was online only, so the results from that survey obviously weren't collected by these random samples, so the information from those results are not included in the findings that I'm speaking about tonight, but you can view all of that on our website at the website address that I indicated at the beginning. I lost my mouse. Okay, so as I said, I'm gonna just touch on the key findings from the report, and these findings are based upon participants' perception of quality and importance, and again, it represents a snapshot in time. So the survey findings are benchmarked against national benchmarks, which obviously includes all size cities in the nation. We also have a custom benchmark, which is other communities with the population between 15,000 and 35,000, and then it also compares to American Canyon's results in 2015. So the first key finding was that residents appreciate American Canyon's governance and leadership. Nearly 70% of residents gave positive evaluations to the overall quality of services provided by the city. This was similar to the comparison of communities across the nation. Three-quarters of residents favorably rated the overall customer service by employees and the city's public information services. And additionally, respondents gave high marks to city leadership, with about two-thirds of the respondents feeling that residents were treated fairly and with respect. About six in 10 residents positively rated the job American Canyon government does at welcoming resident involvement, and at least half of residents evaluated American Canyon officials as being honest and generally acting in the best interest of the community. So the second key finding was that although some aspects of American Canyon's economy have seen small gains over time, this facet remains an area of opportunity for the community. The economy is a concern for most residents within American Canyon, as it is in the nation, with 93% rating it an essential or very important focus area for the next few years. When asked what impact, if any, the economy would likely have on their family income in the next six months, only 19% of residents expected a positive impact, while 37% felt it would be a negative impact. About one-quarter of residents positively reviewed the city's vibrancy of downtown commercial areas, which was a slight increase over the prior survey, but still scored much lower than in comparison with communities across the nation. A similar proportion of residents were pleased with the city's shopping opportunities and employment opportunities, which was also lower than the national benchmarks. About four in 10 gave positive marks to American Canyon as a place to visit, as well as to the community's economic development. And roughly one-third gave favorable ratings to the variety of business and service establishments, but more than half indicated that the overall quality of business and service establishments was excellent or good, and that was an increase from the previous survey. So in addition, the overall economic health of American Canyon, excuse me, improved slightly since 2015, with more than six in 10 respondents offering positive evaluations of their perceptions. So the third key finding is that survey respondents indicate that crime may be a concern, but they value the city's safety services. Nearly all residents, 99%, rated safety as essential or very important for the city to focus on in the coming two years. About eight in 10 residents scored the feeling of safety in their neighborhood during the day positively, which was on par with benchmark comparisons. Three-quarters reported feeling safe in American Canyon's downtown commercial area during the day, which is lower than the national benchmark comparisons, and about six in 10 residents felt very or somewhat safe from violent crime and property crime, both of which were also lower than the national benchmarks. The majority of residents gave favorable reviews of the city's fire services, 91%, and ambulance or emergency medical services. Three-quarters gave positive marks to police services, fire prevention education, and a similar percentage reported feeling safe from fire, flood, or other national disasters, natural disasters. About six in 10 residents reviewed crime prevention and emergency preparedness favorably, and all of the public safety services were on par with national averages. So the fourth and final finding, or key finding at least, is that American Canyon residents see their community as welcoming and inclusive, contributing to a positive overall quality of life. Most residents rated the city as a place, I'm sorry, rated the city as a place to live, 83% excellent or good, and the overall quality of life in American Canyon at 77%. About eight in 10 were also likely to recommend living in American Canyon and plan to remain in the city for the next few years. A similarly higher proportion favorably reviewed American Canyon as a positive place to raise children at 80%. Ratings for the city's inclusivity were also positive, likely contributing to the high quality of life experience by residents. About eight in 10 residents positively rated the community for valuing and respecting residents from diverse backgrounds and attracting people from diverse backgrounds, both of which scored higher than the national benchmark comparisons. Similarly, American Canyon received positive marks from three-quarters of residents making all residents feel welcome. The majority of residents were pleased with the sense of community in American Canyon and the openness and acceptance of the community toward people of diverse backgrounds. And additionally, at least half rated the neighborliness of residents, and the civic community pride as excellent or good. So that concludes the brief key findings about this report. I do have with us tonight, for if there are any questions or comments, we have our police chief, Rick Greenberg, with us, and then we also have Demima Mann and Brandon Barnett from Poco, so if there's any questions specific to the scientific side of things here, they can help out with that, but I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you for the report, that certainly reflects a lot of comments I'm sure we all hear about the city, particularly about inclusiveness and the diversity of our population as well. I think there's a question or a comment here from councilmember Oral.
I'm gonna do my best to just ask clarifying questions before I go into comments, so that I want to hear public comment on this first. I have a clarifying question, I was really confused in the report, just because I'm not a statistician, on page three, how should I understand unweighted, weighted, and target numbers? And if somebody could tell me how I should think about that, because I kept looking at those numbers, and unweighted seemed way different from weighted, but weighted was closer to target, and I didn't know how those numbers came together, if I could get a brief explanation on that? And what number are we actually reporting? I don't think we're reporting target, are we reporting weighted? Somebody help me understand this.
Sure, I'm gonna turn that over to one of our people from Poco here to help us out with that.
Sure, I can take that. Can folks hear me? I know you had trouble with the other presenters before.
It's a little low, but you can make it, just speak loudly.
If you can adjust your microphone, that might help.
Yeah, I think it's an issue in the room, because we can hear everybody.
It is the room, trust me, it's the room, yeah.
Yeah. So that's a great question about weighting data, ultimately, the goal of the National Community Survey, as Jen noted, is to measure the overall community livability of the city, and it's our goal to make sure that the data is representative of your community as a whole. So we do that in a few different ways, and one of them is weighting the data. So all of the reporting that you have seen in the full report and all So all of the reporting that you have seen in the full report and all of the data that Jen just showed you is the weighted data. So we look at the raw demographics from the responses we got to the survey and compare that to the most recent census data available for the city, that's the target. And then we apply weights. We never want to apply weights that are too high or overly manipulate data, but we want to make it as representative of the community as possible. So that weighted column represents, you know, who's being represented in the...
Okay, so let me be more specific. What is a weight?
So for instance, you know, we often tend to hear from more homeowners than renters, more older adults than younger adults, that sort of thing. So each respondent that has responded to the survey has basically a row of data for all of their responses and the values for all of their responses. And we might turn down the weight, say, of maybe, you know, just, this is not specific to American Canyon, just a way I typically explain it. Perhaps maybe a white woman in her 60s that's a homeowner, that survey record might be turned down to, you know, 3/4 instead of 1. If we had no weight, each record would be equal. And then maybe a young Hispanic male that's a renter, maybe that survey weight is turned up to 1.5. Does that make sense?
No, but it sounds like you're using... It is not quantitative, it's qualitative to me, and how, I'm curious how you're applying the weights to this whole thing. Like, in that example, and I'm not trying to pick on that example or use that, but like, how do you do that? It becomes something that Polco does rather than any sort of statistical analysis or scientific application, right?
It is a scientific statistical analysis. We've been doing this for decades, and our active members of APOR, the American Association of Public Opinion Research, and regularly report findings to them. The reason why you're not going to see a perfect match is that we are careful never to apply weights that are too high to a single record, but everything we do is a best practice in this industry. And it's done, it's done very scientifically.
I'm just going to take your word for that, and maybe I'll read up on it, maybe we can follow up afterwards. But I'm just, I know that the weighted is what's being reported, so thanks for kind of clarifying.
Yes, the goal of weighting, to simplify it, is to make it more representative of the community as a whole as possible. But it doesn't drastically change results. We can look at weighted versus unweighted data. The weighting is to try and make it more representative.
Yeah, I think what, if I may, Councilmember Oro, I think what is perplexing a lot of us is how do you determine weight? Why is one...
With computer programs and scientific analysis. I mean, it's...
All right. Sure, my head will blown up, but thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we can send articles and kind of, you know, it's pretty high-level statistical analysis.
That's it for my clarifying questions. I will have more after I hear from public comment.
All right, okay. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, even though I probably shouldn't get involved in the weighting concept, I think if I'm not mistaken, our goal is to relate it back to what our real demographics are. So using the example of homeowner versus renter, if all of our, you know, if we get 80% of the responses are homeowners, when we know the homeowner actually is only 60%, somehow you want to adjust the homeowner responses down so it's more typical of a, you know, 60-40 split versus the 80-20 that you actually got.
That begins to help explain it.
That's my theory, because I took an intro to statistics class and dropped out two weeks into it.
Yeah. No, I never got into intro, so.
That's, okay. Now, we get to my clarifying question. What I like about this survey is that not only do you get your numbers weighted as they may be, you get to compare them to national standards and then to our own, you know, unique standard of smaller communities. And that's really, to me, important, because what I've seen is we get really high responses, which sounds good until you realize, well, all the communities have really high responses in certain areas, and so you begin to put yourself in perspective. So the first clarifying question is, in all the reams of data that's available, and for a data junkie like me, I like that, I couldn't see our comparison with our numbers compared to the 15,000 to 20,000, or whatever the smaller city population range. It only was compared to the national standard, which is everybody from New York City to Small Town USA. So the first clarifying question is, is there a set of data that compares us to our, you know, population size versus the national?
Someone will let Brandon answer that. I believe it's in the Tableau report online, but I'll verify that.
So that was my first curious question. Then the one that's really methodological is, how do you come up with similar and lower and higher? Because when I'm going through all the detailed stuff, it's got, I don't, let's see, what's the table that it's at? It's... Okay, it's the custom benchmark tables, starting at least on Granicus on page 33. And the last column is the percentile, meaning if it's 99%, that means we were on, you know, there was, everybody was below us almost. And there are situations where we might be at the 99% percentile and still considered similar. And it seems to me that if we're in the 99% percentile, we've got to be pretty high, especially if we're ranked number one. So I'm not sure how you decided our response is similar versus higher or lower. So that's my question.
So to answer your first question, the custom benchmarks that you just mentioned is the comparisons to our like-sized communities. That's what that data is that you just mentioned.
So that is the custom benchmark.
And then I'll let Brandon or Demima answer on the similar or lower, higher piece. I don't know that part.
Good.
Sure, I'm happy to help put that into some more context. So we've intentionally made it difficult to be anything other than similar to the benchmark. And the reason we've done that is it's our goal to try and help make this data as actionable as possible. So broadly, you know, areas where your ratings are similar to the benchmark should be considered positive, and, you know, you're being compared to a large group of other communities across the country, but there are other communities that are doing this survey or surveys like this. And so they tend to be very high-performing organizations with pretty high ratings. So to be similar in that, you know, group of communities is a positive thing. So the wideband, we've created an average rating based on all of the communities in the database for each of the questions. And if you're within 10 points of that average, your rating is similar to the benchmark. You have to be higher, more than 10 points above that average rating to be higher, and more than 10 points lower to be considered below the benchmark. And the reason why the percentile can sometimes be a little bit counterintuitive is that there can be ratings that cluster all around the same, the same kind of, that's similar, that average. There can be big clusters that are quite high, and maybe it's not possible to be higher than a benchmark if the average rating is very high. But I'm happy to look at us, you know, if you want to ask about a specific rating, but does that help put that into context?
A little better, thank you.
Does it comment? Councilmember Washington?
Yeah, I think my question is pretty much similar to Councilmember Joseph's, but there are no specific type cities that we are comparing our data to. And I guess when I look at percentiles, it could be manipulated whichever way you want it in a lot of situations. I would probably be more interested on how many actual people submitted their opinions. Like, say, a city like ours, we have 21,000 people. Out of 21,000 people, we actually got, you know, 1,200 people that participated. So I'm curious if you have that type of data to share.
So typically, our goal with this kind of a survey is to get to a margin of error of at least plus or minus 5% around, 5% around the data. And that can be, that is based on the number of survey responses back. So to get to that margin of error of about plus or minus 5%, we need about 330 total responses, and that can be, that works for any sized community. We did achieve that a plus or minus 5% margin of error threshold. That's widely accepted in American Canyon, and your response rates were around average as well.
Okay. Looking forward to hearing what the public comment have to say about it, but thank you.
Any comment from council? Ready for a public comment? Public comment is available on this? If anybody wanted to adjust the council on this matter? Anyone in the public? No? How about in the queue?
I have no hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment. We'll return to council for further discussion, questions, decision.
Okay.
It's you.
It's me, all right, great. So now that I've clarified my comments, I want to give my overall impressions of the survey. You know, first of all, I'm glad we did it, but overall, I didn't find anything new or striking about it. It was, when I looked at the numbers from 2015, every, almost every number was within the margin of error of 5%. And so we were, as they say, when I traveled in Vietnam for three weeks, you go on a tour, and there's different tours you could take. There's five people competing. And you ask them, well, what's different about your tour? And they'll say, same, same, but different, you know? It was the same, same report, but different. And there was nothing striking or moving about it, and just some of the highlights that I think we see overall was, you know, you know, a place to, the vibrancy of our downtown was low, but we've taken steps since 2015 to do that. We're seeing Watson Ranch come on. We're going to have a downtown and a town center. People want a variety of businesses and services and establishments. That was a low number, but we've heard that for many years, and that's the reason why we're putting a town center in. That's why we've implemented Broadway district-specific plan. That's why we're making these improvements on the highway. You know, I saw crime in there as a concern for residents, but they're happy with our public safety, folks. But if you look at that, I believe there's a pandemic effect in some of these, and I don't think that was discussed. We're taking a survey. People are coming out of the weirdest last three years of their lives, particularly with 2020 and the COVID thing, what's happening there. And I think a national, it was certainly, crime was a California trend, if not a national trend here on top of mine. So that, to me, felt more like a bigger event than just us in our town. You know, I think this survey like this is good. I don't know if we want to do it annually, you know? I mean, I think we should do it every few years. How we might even want to do it like the census. And every 10 years or so, maybe five years at the most. But I feel like, and I was talking to Jen yesterday about this, I ran into her. The survey like this is a good benchmark. It's a record of where we're headed in the city. But as council members, as leaders in the community, we have more real-time data than we've ever had before in our lives, namely in social media. You can hear and feel what's going on with the city when just reading some of these discussion boards. And if we're out there doing our job, we can hear this. And that was only reinforced by the fact that when I read this survey, there was nothing really new for me here. Not saying it's not worthy to do, but I think there's new and better ways to go about doing it. And that's my general feeling about it. So thank you for the report, and thank you for the survey.
I did want to comment on one thing that you said about the vibrant downtown and the growth. And just for note, our numbers did actually increase here from our 2015 surveys. So even though it's still lower than national or benchmark averages, custom, it's still good. It's better than it was, which means people are seeing some changes slowly, but they're getting there.
How do we deal with the issue of feeling, the issue of crime in the city? Because we get a police report, we find out, you know, this, compared to other cities, not a significant amount of crime in American Canyon, yet the survey, the respondents are rating it as a big issue apparently.
So I'll definitely let Chief Greenberg jump in if he wants to, but I think just in what I'm hearing and seeing from the community and the outreach that we do, people aren't as connected as they were a few years ago. People are more isolated because of the pandemic and just changing conditions, losing jobs, that type of thing. So I think that in the coming months, as we continue with National Night Out and the different neighborhood watch, getting our meetings back together, having more interaction, as Director Ekada mentioned earlier, with the interaction in the community events, it means a lot to people to come back together. And I think, in my opinion, what we're seeing is people are, when you're isolated and not engaging with others, everything seems worse, right? So I think when you look at the police annual report, the numbers, the data doesn't show the fear, you know? But I think if you watch the news or you're not engaging with your neighbors and solid in your neighborhood watch, you might feel a little bit more afraid. So I think it's that, but I don't know if Chief wants it. He's agreeing with me. For the record, Chief Greenberg is agreeing with me.
I see, certainly understand your response on that, because I think that the isolation has a lot to do with mental health issues. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, now that we've gotten through our methodology questions. For me, I think this is a good thing to do. If I'm not mistaken, we're paying an annual subscription, so even though Councilmember Oro doesn't think we should do it annually, we might as well, since we're paying for the level of service. For me, I think maybe every other year might make more sense, just because it's a lot of effort to try to convince people to fill out a form and a survey, and it's a fairly long one. But I do think it's important to track on a fairly regular basis because, primarily because it gives you the trend. If, you know, we did it once in 2015, and it gives you a sense of where things stand. 2022, we get another image. But I think for my purposes, you want to see trends, and you also want to see where you should emphasize your focus. We keep getting a low mark in economics and our economic retailing and all that. Yes, we know that's a problem, but number one, it really ought to focus our attention to say, okay, we really need to invest in our economic development programs or working with the chamber, because the public isn't satisfied, for lack of a better term. And even though we think that we're working on Watson Ranch and all these other things, and we are, the public hasn't figured it out yet. And so I think it simply helps us focus our priorities. I would agree that if you tune into social media and talk to people, you'll get just as good a sense. There wasn't anything that surprised me either. But I think it's important to do this routinely, because you get a little more of a scientific number besides just your gut feeling. And it also helps, when your gut feeling doesn't jive with somebody else's gut feeling, it might be useful to say, well, here's a survey in which everybody else was thinking along this line or that line. The last thing for me is, there were some responses that seemed a little counterintuitive. The safety is probably the biggest thing. You can't, you know, not have a concern about, or not feel safe even though you don't have any specific concerns. And to me, that kind of reflects the fact that there's a perception and reality thing going on. And in surveys, you're really just measuring their perception. How do you feel about police services? Most people don't have access to our latest crime report to say, well, even though I don't feel safe, I know statistically we're doing better than average. So this is a great way to figure out how the community feels. Even if it isn't how they should because of our objective data, it's how they feel. And we need to know that on a more systematic basis than relying on gut and other sources. So for me, this is something we ought to do on a regular basis. Yearly maybe, might be too much, but every other year would be reasonable in my mind and for the reasons I've outlined. I think it's good information. It gives us good trend analysis so that we can see if we're doing better or worse. You always want that feedback loop and something more comprehensive than, you know, what people are talking to me, because we're all subject to certain biases. The people who talk to me are grumpier than people who talk to somebody else and so on. So we need to be reminded occasionally that most people are happy and, you know, go from there.
Thank you for your service, Councilmember Joseph.
So to respond, Councilmember Joseph, we actually have an agreement for three years with Polco, and part of our agreement, the recommendations from Polco from their standards is to conduct a survey of this type every five years. In between there, we have access to a very extensive library of surveys that are designed by research professionals from their company. And all of the jurisdictions throughout the nation that use their services also have access to those. So we can benchmark across, you know, surveys that other cities and counties are doing. They specialize in local government, so that's why we selected this vendor. In between the five years, there are a couple other types of benchmark surveys related to different topics than this. But we also have the ability to do, they're like quick polls that connect back into some of the data that we reflected on here, where you can keep a constant pulse check on how things are going over time. So I would recommend that we do something like that in between these larger surveys. I think if you try to do a survey too soon, we're not going to... I think if you try to do a survey too soon, we, we're not gonna get as good of results. Because to have people take this much time to do a survey like this was kind of, you know, it's, it's kind of difficult. So I think anything we can do to get the quick polling. And I'm gonna ask Brandon to actually explain the difference of Polco and like Survey Monkey or basic surveying tools, because there's something really special about the way this program works that I think you'll be interested in hearing.
Can everybody hear me alright?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. So, yes, as Jen was kind of alluding to, one of the things that we do within not just our quick polls and everything else, but our scientific sampling is what is really gonna give you an accurate cross-section of your population. And our benchmark surveys, the benefit to them, while, yes, they do provide the perception of your residents, while they may not know everything that's going on, it does convey how they are feeling and how they view the city. But it's also giving everybody a chance to have a sense of anonymity when they are expressing their opinions. And so that's one of the most valuable things that we've found. Now, to take that further, those that have expressed their opinions and have signed up to be a part of your feedback panel will give you a better sense of the true feeling of the community as you dig deeper into some of these topics. Now, we know that the majority of people who do attend council meetings and do voice their opinion are kind of in the top five percent, and then you have a bottom five percent that don't really engage with the city. They don't trust the government, they're just a very hard-to-reach population. What we are looking to do, and what we have achieved with many cities and jurisdictions across the country, is hitting that middle section of your population. The people that may or may not ever actually attend a council meeting, they may or may not pay attention to what's going on, but it is a true cross-section of your population. And that's what's really gonna give you the most actionable data. So while you have the subscription and hot topics like the Home Key Project on Broadway would be a perfect example, that this is something that you can use Polco, get your respondents, use your social media contacts and your social media accounts to get the word out there that you are looking into more feedback from this, to get a better idea of what does your population actually think? What is the actual sense of the community when it comes to hot topic items such as this? And that's what the benefit of this subscription is. Now, when it comes to doing more than one survey, while, yes, you could do it every five years, I would say that the full trends from 2015 should be taken with a grain of salt. That 2015 was a very different time for everybody in this country. But we have found that the jurisdictions and the cities that really do the survey more frequently, every two, every three years, they really get a sense of engagement with their community, and they're really able to track their movement through those trends. And while, yes, the national benchmarks do carry their own weight, they're not the end-all, be-all to how your city should be rated and how you should be viewing performance or perception. Really, your own trends against yourself over time are what is really going to make a difference and help you make the most decisions. I have seen some jurisdictions where they may have had a 15% decrease in overall economic health based on their trends, but they were still higher than the benchmark just because of the benchmark data. Now, we would hope, as a resident, just speaking as a resident, that our local governments wouldn't wait until they fall to similar or lower than the benchmark before they take action. I would hope that, you know, somebody wouldn't be looking at their house and waiting until 15% of it was starting to burn before they would put the fire out. So really, what we're looking at here is, the Polco can help you really get more data when it comes to these hot topic items in between these benchmark surveys, but will give you an accurate trend data to help you make decisions moving forward, to help you get feedback on how you've performed, what programs have been successful, what haven't, and really help give the residents a voice and help you guide your residents and provide what they're looking for.
Thank you, that's helpful to know. I think it's, uh, also, I would guess, it's how you frame the question too. You just mentioned the, the Home Key Project. Certainly, that may have an impact on how people feel about personal safety, based on their perception of what that might, impact might be. But I think one can drill down through that lower to find out the subcomponents of that that deal with, uh, public safety, personal safety, uh, you know, real, perceived, uh, what's the neighborhood like they live in, et cetera. I'm just surprised with that, because the, uh, the data we get from the police department shows that, uh, overall, American Canyon is a safe place. You know, it seems to be more smaller crime level types of things, though. But interesting, I think, any more comment from council? So this is an informational item?
And if I could just throw in one quick thing about that. While you do have the police data, one thing that this shows me, just having looked through the data and having looked through the report, is that maybe the way the residents are receiving that data from the police reports may not be the most effective. And that may be a reason as to why the perception is what it is.
Good point. Well, thank you for the presentation this evening.
Councilmember Alpadamas.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, your hand's up, yes.
No worries, I'm a little bit hard to see. Thank you guys for the presentation, I actually really appreciate the data. I, I haven't said anything, so I just wanted to, um, jump on the bandwagon of agreement in terms of having a survey like this every couple of years. As you mentioned before, there's the, you know, the group that, the five percenters that will never talk to us no matter what we do, and then the five percenters that are always talking to us, no matter what we do. So it's nice to ha, be able to reach a larger population. And what I've learned about American Canyon residents is, a lot of us want to be involved and want to respond and want to be active, but don't necessarily go looking for it because they're so busy, right? This is a commuter town, most people work from out of town, we're also a town of young families. So we're, you know, involved in soccer games, basketball games, dance recitals, after-school activities, and don't really have the time to go looking for how to participate. So when it's showing up at their house, and it's like a five-minute survey, I think we're gonna, we're gonna get a lot more results than just what we're hearing over and over from the same individuals on Nextdoor or on Facebook or whatever, right? So I just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate it, and we, I agree, we should do this probably every couple of years.
I have one thing to add, Mayor, that I just thought of when Vice Mayor Alpadamas said the commuter point. It made me think about the safety point, and a lot of our residents are actually commuting out of town, working in other city, bigger cities. So I wonder if that has any.
Exactly.
Sway on their perspective about how safe they feel. They might have had their car broken into in another city, but they actually live here. I know that's happened to a lot of our employees that don't live here in American Canyon. Personally, you know, that they've had their purses and things stolen out of their vehicles in other cities. So that could be a point too.
Good number of our, of our local residents shop in another city because of their particular grocery.
Right.
Needs, yeah.
Along that same line, there's people, I think the survey showed that people felt safe at home at night. You know, so I, there were, it was kind of confusing. There were survey responses that sounded like, you know, you feel safe, and then others that sounded like you don't feel safe. So I, I think it's, you know, in, in their heads, they may be saying, well, right here, I feel safe, but in general, I don't. And I think the pandemic has messed up enough of our heads that that's probably a, a sense of isolation and, and all of that. So I think, I think this is a probably a, a weird time to survey, you know, perceptions of safety.
Gives us a perception of where people are.
Well, and the media too, the stories that you see on the news are mostly negative, so.
Yeah.
That has an impact as well.
That might be something to consider as we move forward with this, taking a particular component of this and focus on that.
Yeah, certainly, Mayor, and as we wrap up this conversation and we start thinking about, you know, when we might do something like this in the future, the last thing I want to end with is that by conducting the surveys like this, we are engaging the residents. We are literally asking their opinions and are committed to doing that and listening. And I think that very, very topic is, is important too. It's, it's walk in the walk that we talk.
And, and I would agree. I, I think when we did this in 2015, the original theory was to do it every two years, and it just fell off the radar. So I think with the subscription, I do think every two or three years to repeat the survey makes sense. I like the quick polls or whatever, in part because I'm cheap enough to say, if we're paying an annual subscription, I want to get something every, every year, so. But I do think those hotspots is a good idea of, of how to use the program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Polco staff.
We look forward to more data on this. Moving on in our business this evening, item 14, ballot measure J.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, this item, completely different than last item that we just had, this item will characterize as more of a procedural matter. The city is in receipt of a petition from a local resident. And the petition relates to a couple of different kind of long-term planning ideas. Relates to modifications of the American Canyon urban limit line and various potential changes to American Canyon's general plan. Both the city clerk and the city attorney have reviewed the petition, and the petitioner is here this evening. And this item has come together in somewhat of a quick fashion. And so there is an election being held in November. And the staff recommendation, as I'll get to in the report, is that this measure be put onto the ballot. But what we wanted to make really clear for, for the residents and for the audience is to understand the procedural nature of this. The council's being asked to vote on, on this item tonight, but they're not voting on the measure. They're not endorsing or not endorsing the measure, we're not adding to or subtracting from the validity of the arguments or anything like that. There really hasn't been any analysis of the proposed measure, and none has been submitted. The item really tonight is procedural in nature. There have been a number of signatures gathered, I think 3,200 or something like that, were originally gathered. And when the process goes that way, as opposed to starting with the city and, and starting with the city and its own general plan and the work done by staff, there's a separate process that's invoked. But when that process is invoked, it then does come back to the city council and can be put on the ballot for the voters to decide. There are, again, procedurally tonight, two options for the council. Option A would be to take an action, to put it on the November ballot. And option B would be to adopt the ordinance outright. And the, the council would have the authority to, to take the ideas from the applicant and the petitioners and just adopt them as a matter of course, because of the number of signatures that have been gathered. However, the staff recommendation is to not follow that path. The staff recommendation is to put the matter onto the ballot for the voters to decide. If that's the direction that the council decides to go, there would be a measure added to the November ballot, November 8th ballot. That would be known as Measure J, and that would be the ballot that's here within the incorporated limits of American Canyon. And then the voters of American Canyon would be asked the question. That question shows up on page 154 of the packet. And the question would read, shall a, shall the measured at 157 acres owned by Green Island Property LLC to the City of American Canyon Urban Limit Line and amend the general plan to expand the potential city industrial development be adopted? So that would be the question that we put to the voters. So we wanted to make really clear tonight, the council, if it gives direction and approves these resolutions, would be putting something on the, on the ballot. They're not actually voting to, to have this measure be adopted as is. So that's, that's what putting it on the ballot would be. There were, I was trying to look at the number of the certifications. Do you have that number?
Here, right here. That's the calculation.
Yeah, thank you. It's in the staff report, sorry. I was just going to, the first resolution is a resolution of the, the registrar of voters. So the, the process that is involved is the signatures are gathered, and then they're brought to City Hall, where the city clerk and the, and the city attorney review them. And then they bring those petitions to the registrar of voters, Mr. John Tudor there at Napa County. There were 2,344 signatures collected. And then the registrar of voters goes through a statistical process for, for validating whether a sufficient number of signatures have been gathered. The total that was needed in order to have a measure qualified for the ballot would have been 1,324. And according to the registrar of voters, based on a sample size, there is a sufficient number of valid signatures. Not all of them are valid, you have to be a, an American Canyon resident, you have to be actually a registered voter in American Canyon. And so while they gathered a number of signatures, not all of them would have qualified. And so of the 500, the statistical analysis of the 500 that they grabbed, about 359 of them were valid, and the rest were not, some were duplicate, and some were not valid at all. But based on that statistical analysis, the registrar of voters has determined that there would be at least 1,324 signatures, which would be that threshold. So the first measure, the first, sorry, resolution, that is before the council tonight, rates specifically just to that part of this exercise, the signature gathering itself. And it's a measure, it's a resolution that essentially says, the council agrees with the process used by the registrar of voters, the city clerk, the city attorney, and that these are valid signatures, a sufficient number of valid signatures related to this, to this measure. So that's what the first resolution is. The second resolution relates to potential changes to the city's urban limit line, as well as potential changes to the city's general plan. Those changes show up on page, start showing up on page 161, actually, no, they start to show up on page 160, 167 is the notice. And page 167 really starts to explain the petition itself, the purpose of the petition, and then the potential changes to the American Canyon general plan. Those be, those changes begin on, really in earnest in the appendix on page 72, which is where some of the visual representations start to take place. The, the property that is, the subject of this initiative is located at the northwestern edge of city limits, currently not within the city's limits, but adjacent to the city limits on its northwestern periphery. And so, starting with appendix A all the way through C, there are various proposed changes to the city's general plan, including a, a proposed zoning designation of industrial, and also a proposed change to both the circulation element figures, as well as the zoning figures. The, let's see here. You know, I think if there are other questions on what is being proposed to be changed, staff can, can answer those. But, and I think the important thing to also know, that this initiative does not actually approve any kind of development. If this, if the council agrees with the staff recommendation and puts it on the ballot, it would go to the voters. If the voters, by a simple majority, said yes, the changes to the general plan would happen. But that would not mean that the property is in the city's limits, and it wouldn't mean that a development is happening or has happened. It would be, yes, a first step in that process, and it's clearly contemplated by the initiative, but there are many, many steps in that process. So just wanted to make sure the public was clear that any action tonight wasn't going to result in any new activity, construction activity, and it wouldn't even result in anything other than a vote by the electorate. I don't know, Bill, if Bill or Teresa, you had anything you wanted to add?
I'd just confirm what the city manager said. You have agenda 14s about whether Green Island Vineyard should be in the city. It's being advanced as an initiative measure, emanates from the Constitution. It's just the electoral portion of the initial land use decision. So, again, substantively, there are several decisions that would follow, both by LAFCO and by the city. It's exempt this electoral process from review under SEQA presently. Review under SEQA would take place later, if the process proceeds. So this is just a procedural step of validating what the registrar is required to do. After a successful petition, initiative measure was circulated, and then whether you want to approve it, or whether you want to place it on the ballot for the electorate to decide.
Anything else you wanted to add, Teresa?
No, I think it's good.
That's great. In communicating with the registrar of voters, the reason it's being brought forward tonight is because July 27th would be a deadline of sorts in order to get something to the county, then to get. then to get it on the ballot for November. So again, this all coming together somewhat in late in the process, those are the timelines involved from the registrar of voters.
Okay. Is that staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, now it's council time to weigh in on this matter. I see Councilmember Joseph has his light on.
Yes, and I just want a little more clarification. Some of the concerns that I've heard reflect this idea of how much of this would be open space and, and so forth. And just for my clarification, if this goes to the voters, the voters approve it, it then still has to be brought into the sphere of influence. It still has to be actually annexed. It then has to come before us as a, as a request for development entitlements. And the city still has its traditional ability to impose conditions such as setbacks from wetlands, you, you know, there's, so there's plenty of opportunity for the city to be able to ensure that this develops consistent with, you know, the economic necessity of the property owner, obviously, the economic well-being of the city, the environmental benefits and community concerns. So in that typical process that we do anytime we want to develop anything. So I guess what I'm trying to clarify is what distinguishes this action from, you know, an actual entitlement is that this is the first step in a number of sequences in which it's transferring control of that land from the county to the city. And so that the city then has its abilities to ensure that it's developed in a manner consistent with the needs of our community.
As the city attorney, the, the short answer would be the determination of general plan consistency.
Right.
Internally, vertically and horizontally, and adequate review under SEQA is something that would be a subsequent discretionary.
Okay.
Decision of this council.
So in other, I guess I should have said it differently. If this were to be approved by the voters, it doesn't mean anything other than they've gone through the first step of a number of steps to do something. So no one needs to assume that if this were to be approved, that, you know, all 157 acres would turn into an industrial warehouse overnight.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, city does retain land use priority over the property. I think you, you spelled out some of the visions that could be perceived on it, but it remains in the hands of the city. I think, you know, clarity to me, voters have signed a petition. I think they've been engaged in that process. I think to me, having them respond to it as a ballot initiative is certainly a path going forward. I do know that, for clarity for the community though, I think you've been getting to spelling it out quite well between our staff and you, Councilmember Joseph, the city maintains, retains land use authority over the property, what it's going to be used for, how it's going to be used. The applicant certainly would have their perspective on what they feel their needs are, and that will be a, I'm assuming, a very robust conversation. But there are certain sensitive areas in there that other parts of the community would like to preserve. So we would have that, we'd at least have that conversation by having that initiative move forward.
Other council comment? Council ready for public comment? Public comment, please come to the podium. Please identify yourself. Come to the podium. Do we have a list of speaker?
I have no speaker cards for anyone in the audience.
So please identify yourself by name, sir, and we have three minutes. Yes. Speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Frank Coppola and I'm a resident here in town and moved here just before the pandemic hit. What I don't quite understand, and I'm just a layman and don't understand all the legal terms, is whatever is being proposed tonight cannot be decided upon by you all. Is that correct?
If it goes to a ballot initiative, that's correct. Means the voters get to decide if they want this going forward.
Or there was an option, or something could be decided upon. That's what I heard.
Yeah, I'd be happy to clarify that for you. So the process goes something like this. When a voter has an idea and they go and get a sufficient number of signatures around their idea, then they present those to the council and it's determined they're all valid signatures, or enough of them are valid, then the council has two options. Option A is it can take the good idea and it can adopt it right there. Option B is to say, we see all the signatures, we see all of this, we're going to let the voters decide yes or no.
Right.
And so that's, those are the two processes.
Okay. So, and you, Mr. Hawley, you articulated what the actual measure would be and I didn't quite hear it. Could you articulate that again, please?
Sure. It generally does two things. The first thing that it does is it moves the boundary of the city's urban limit line. So right, right now, the property that is the subject of this petition is outside of the city's urban limit line. And so the first thing that this petition do would be to move that line around to bring this property inside of the urban limit line.
And that's doable? You could just move a line? American Canyon started here and now it starts here?
It's a pretty complicated process for moving and there are a number of different lines that actually end up in play. The urban limit line is a growth boundary that the, the city has established for itself and so it can move that. There are other agencies involved and the city attorney referenced one known as the Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO by short. That's actually the entity that decides the city limits, the municipal boundary. So some of these lines are kind of long-range planning lines, but the actual municipal boundary of the city is actually decided by the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO.
What does that mean?
You have a minute?
One more minute.
Thirty seconds left.
Would you, would you articulate the, the actual proposal if it were put on a, on the ballot?
Sure. If it, if it goes onto the ballot, the voters are going to be asked whether the urban limit line should be moved to include the property and also whether the city's general plan, which is a document that we use to envision new development, should change and we should start planning for development of this property. To date, we've not been planning at all for the development of this property and basically it's a question, should we start planning for the development of the property?
Okay. My thought would be to send it to the, the voters, put it up to the voters. That would be my thought. Thank you for your time and for your patience.
Sir, could you please give me your last name again? Last name? I couldn't understand.
Coppola, C-O-P-P-O-L-A.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Eve Khan, K-A-H-N. I wear many hats in the Napa County community. I'm a realtor by profession. I'm a, a member of the Napa Housing Coalition. I'm a chair of Get a Grip on Growth and I'm co-president of Napa Vision 2050. I thought it was very interesting that we had this national community service information. And one of the things that I picked up was that's a high rating for the government, that the government, you, the government, respect the residents. And I think the residents deserve accurate and transparent government. And from my perspective and speaking on behalf of Napa Vision 2050, we ask you not to put this ballot, this item on the ballot, because this initiative is quite flawed with wording that is false and misleading. And I'll give you just three key items. It indicates the land is vacant. It is not vacant. There's 38 acres of vineyard that is still growing. It is not undeveloped by agricultural standards. There's infrastructure for irrigation, there's farm roads, there's vineyard rows. It indicates that, that there is saltwater intrusion. There is no saltwater intrusion. Last month at LAFCO, Paul Amarosa, who was hired by the owners of this property, was emphatically said, there is no saltwater intrusion. That recycled water use on heavy clay soils without adequate rainwater has resulted in soils that are no longer conducive to growing quality grapes. Obviously, you don't have enough time to turn around and correct this and bring it back on the ballot for November. Thank you for correcting. I thought, I thought there was time. But I believe that the residents of your community deserve accuracy and transparency and this initiative has flawed. And so they are voting on something with information that is not accurate. So that's, that is what my suggestion is to you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the council. My name is Gary Margadant. I live in the unincorporated area of Napa County.
I'm sorry, sir, could you spell your last name for the city clerk?
Please.
Spell it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And thanks for the opportunity to speak about this, this measure.
I'm also the, sorry, I'm also the co-president of Napa Vision 2050. And we work in the county and we approach the county in the same way that we're approaching you. We think that there's something that we could help with by pointing out the transparency that's necessary to, to maintain, you know, your community cohesion. And we, we really want to see this, this type of thing happen. And as Eve has mentioned, you know, this, this suggestion for a ballot initiative, we think is misleading. We would prefer to see that it's direct and transparent. And I think that we want to make sure that this reflects well on, on you and the government up here and continues, you know, to have a good lead in that survey that comes out every so often. We think that's very important to this. And that's our emphasis, you know? We really like to see the community work well together with their government and we want to try to continue to do that in everything that we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Yvonne Boginsky and I'm a president, private resident of this county. I actually am a, a walker out on the wetlands and I enjoy the beauty of this community. I come down, I walk along the wetlands, I revere in the views, I revere in the wildlife. And when I saw the public notice of this initiative, I started doing a lot of investigation because some of the claims in the initiative were of great concern to me. One of the complaints was the soil toxicity, the, the fact that the soil was in a death spiral. And I had several conversations, I had many conversations. I've been investigating this for the last three weeks. And what I have learned is that this property, that soil has a possibility of being remediated. And I spoke with other soil analysis people and they said, you know, we would like to see the soil, it could be repaired. We've seen worse soil than this. Their soil analysis from the GIV perspective was correct. It is right. The soil is damaged. However, the question I have for the owners of this property is why was that soil never remediated? Why did they continue using the water, increasing the water utilization over the last four years? And why, why didn't they come back and see what they could do to work with the, the recycled water plant to put better water on their vineyard? Yes, they bought land in 1996. It was a different world in 1996. American Canyon was a different place in 1996. And I think that what we need to do now is take a look at this property as a gem. It is a gem here in American Canyon. It is something that will bring people to your community. It will create community. And this is something that I work for and I tell you, yeah, I was out there last Sunday and I was walking with my son and I said to him, can you imagine, they're thinking of building an industrial park out here? And we were just seconded by it. We saw the swans, we saw the ground squirrels, we saw the birds. And I said, yeah, they're going to put those huge warehouses out here, the ones like they did down in South Napa County. And I go, I don't think they know how destructive that's going to be to the future of this community. So I thank you and I certainly hope that you vote against putting this initiative on the ballot.
Thank you. Any other speakers in the audience? Okay. Any speakers in the queue?
I have Chris James.
Good, pretty good.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, council, mayor and vice mayor for letting us talk on this, this evening. This is coming up pretty quick. I feel that it's kind of rushed. I know that they were out there very aggressive about a month ago and several weeks ago collecting signatures. I was accosted, to say the least, by a couple of them at various locations around the city, spouting a whole bunch of lies and claims about the property and how it was going to fix our roads, build new roads. They had no idea, most of them, where the property was. I walk by myself, I know, I live in the city. I walk and run that trail. I walk right by this property multiple times a week. I know it very well. It borders right onto the wetlands, doesn't matter how close or how, how protective of this, this property, they'll say they'll buffer it, it's going to come right down to the wetlands. And if this one goes, it'll be a domino effect along the whole length down toward the, the, the water treatment plant. Up until about a year ago, there was live grapes growing on that. They rolled it all up some months ago, but it was, it was an active thing and, and just opposite, there's a property right next door with live grapes growing right now and I'm sure they're going to be collecting in a couple of months there. So whatever they say, saying it's not active, not viable, it is, I, I see it. I've, I've seen it over the last 10 years of me living here with them picking grapes from there. So, so there's a bunch of lies and, and things going on and it's, so I feel that this is very rushed. I don't know if we can delay it without, you know, opening the city up for, for, you know, any lawsuits, you know, that's my, my worry. But if we can delay it, you know, why does it have to be November? I know it'll cost us probably more for a special election, but we need to, to kind of delay this somehow to, to do something. You know, the residents, you know, these people probably would love to withdraw their names from this. There's thousands of people that have signed this. I'm just shocked, but it's those lies that they were telling people and those lies will continue in November. People will be, you know, signing this petition, this flawed petition, thinking it's going to fix our roads. You know, everyone is desperate to fix our roads and they will sign it. Maybe we can have a competing proposition by, proposed by the city to open up and say what the truth is. But yeah, so I, I'm disheartened right now and I would love to work with anyone in that room. My name is Chris James. You can reach out to me. I would love to work with anyone to try and combat this thing. So yeah, thanks you so much for letting us speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I have no other hands raised.
Okay. There's no other public comment? We'll close public comment at this time. Return to council for further discussion and desired action. A question raised, Mr. Hawley, Mr. Ross, what if this council denies this ballot altogether? What happens?
Well, I wouldn't frame it as denying it, Mayor. What I would say is-
What if we all decided, no, we don't want to proceed with this at all, period?
Yeah, yeah, correct. I would frame it that way. If, if the council decides not to take action. And I don't know, Bill, you want to talk about what happens in that instance?
I think, you know, the way the staff report phrases this and the procedure set forth in the elections code is there's what's known as a ministerial and mandatory duty before you. Now that you have a validly circulated initiative measure, it's met the requirements of the elections code, you have to make the choice of either adopting the measure or placing it on the ballot. I think it would be likely, if you didn't take action, that there would be the potential for litigation compelling you to make that election, meaning choose A or B. Decide to adopt the ordinance or place it on the ballot. Again, this is something that emanates from the constitution. It's an initiative measure, right? The matter before you is to make a choice, so whether or not Green Island's basically going to take the first steps to come into the city. So the matter is not one of discretion, would be another way of putting it. The initiative process has been complied with. It's been certified by the registrar of voters. That's an action you have to take separately, as indicated in the staff report before you. So in likelihood, I think there would be litigation concerning the matter, compelling you to make- compelling you to make the choice, not telling you which choice to make, but raising that issue to comply with the elections code procedure.
So state law says we have to choose one of two options that we're presented with tonight. Thank you. Other council comment? Councilmember Ora?
Yeah. Thank you. So this is what I heard from public comment tonight. Delay the vote, it's flawed. Let the community work together. This isn't the first time a flawed initiative has become, would become, or come to the voters of California or any community. And even if it's not flawed, or whatever opinion you have on it, the initiative process driven by citizens here is something that happens in the state of California. What I heard tonight was asking us to ignore the citizen-driven process on a simple question, which is should Green Island Vineyards be within the city? You know, the thing is, is it probably should considering, you know, what the services we provide to it. And Mr. Ross, I'm going to pause my comments here. If you could talk a little bit about LAFCO and what the, what constitutes, what brings, what brings something into the city versus bringing something, keeping it separate from the county.
LAFCO is a separate statutory procedure from any land use matrix that governs city or county land use decisions. County and city land use decisions are guided by their respective general plans, consistent zoning, and then either adjudicatory permits or legislative permits that implement them. LAFCO goes to the issue through municipal service reviews and spheres of influence to determine what governmental agencies can most efficiently provide municipal services to an affected territory. Affected territory is a defined area. Here, Green Island Vineyards would be an affected territory. The criteria that LAFCO has itself adopted as policies and reflect the law of LAFCO look at things like the efficiency of governmental services. The enumerated governmental services presently that can go forward with respect to Green Island Vineyard. After LAFCO action, at their last meeting, they approved amending the sphere of influence of the fire district, a separate legal agency. That's the last governmental service besides land use that is the type of governmental services that LAFCO considers for extension, moving the city limit lines. So at this point, I think it's fair to say that all but the land use and municipal services, those that would be provided by the city, are already provided by the city. Water, the capability for law enforcement surrounds it. We don't provide that. We would if it came into the city. So the function of LAFCO is based on an established criteria to first extend a sphere of influence to say that, for example, the city is a logical provider of municipal services. Hasn't done that yet. It has with respect to the fire district. There are attorney general opinions that would define Green Island Vineyards as being surrounded by the city. My recollection is it was an issue at incorporation as to whether or not it would be included. So, but again, I want to stress LAFCO is a separate agency. They have separate discretionary issues they would have to go through before this could come into the city. That's several discretionary decisions away from the action before you now.
Understood, but I want to understand that, that the city is already providing many services to that property. Water, the fire district is providing part of that.
Right, recycled water.
Yeah, and if there's a police activity, we will be out there, and so they're, they're, they're serving us. And so it gets me back to my question, or the simple question, and I think you stated it early on, should Green Island Vineyard be in the city? That's what we're asking ourselves today to either, well, first of all, to adopt a resolution for the sufficiency of petition, which is almost administrative because it was presented to us and it's coming from, from Mr. Tudor's office. Then the other one is, how do we decide to answer that question? Should Green Island Vineyard be in the city? We can adopt that this evening, or, or adopt, get direct staff to adopt it as is in the petition, or we could send it to the general election as Measure J. This, by sending it to the general election, we allow for the time and debate to happen. I heard a lot tonight about the sort of end game that's going to happen here. There's years and years of work that needs to be done in terms of environmental quality work, land use, bringing it naturally into the city, plans, whatever they want to do with that property. And they're going to get a lot of resistance, I, it seems like, in terms of what they may end up building there. But that's to be debated in the future. The question tonight is should Green Island Vineyard be in the city? And what is our mechanism of doing that? And for me, you know, I would probably lean on letting the public decide how that we should decide that because it's going to continue the debate, and I think, you know, you know, there's an opportunity there. And considering that we're already doing services for it, it probably should be within the city anyway, no matter what happens to that property. Thank you.
Period. Other council comment? No, I think the, given the time to have that public discussion on it, frankly, you know, 2,400 plus people signed the petition. I think that needs to be respected. I also need to, we need to respect public engagement in this whole process as well. Certainly, I would expect it's going to be a very robust discussion out there in the community, the value of this, and what values people have in terms of future for American Canyon. But to continue that, I think we have, as Councilmember Ora pointed out, we have till November to articulate that. There's opportunities for arguments pro and con with regard to this measure. And certainly those can be a very informative as well. Councilmember Joseph?
I would agree that we should let the voters decide, in, in part because that creates that opportunity for the debate. An option that hasn't been discussed because it would not be a very practical one is, yes, we could delay action, do a study to analyze things, and then if we decided to, you know, at the end of that review, we would still have the same two choices. Adopt it or give, let the voters decide. If we take more than a few weeks, it's going to trigger a special election, which is going to cost at least twice as much, or potentially twice as much, as it's going to cost to put it to the voters in November. So from my perspective, economically, you really won't, don't want to delay this. It's much better to put it to the voters, let the public debate go. And clearly, there will be people advocating for and against, and they're going to bring out the information. I do think there were a lot of interesting arguments for why it should be, why you should sign the petition. I think a public debate, a campaign process is essentially the way to ferret out what's, what's great, what isn't, what can be done, what can't be done, and so forth. So I do think the voters, of the two choices that we have, letting the voters decide makes a lot more sense than us unilaterally saying, yes, it should be part of the city, and then move from there. So I would support staff's recommendation to put it to the voters.
Very good. And back to my comment, my question from, from Mr. Hawley, Mr. Ross was, what if we deny moving forward on this? We don't have a choice. So that's it. City clerk?
Council, Vice Mayor Abadamos has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear you over there. Sorry, Vice Mayor.
No worries. I'm out in the middle of-
But I, I, we have staff here who are looking in your direction.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Teresa, for having my back. I have a couple of comments in response to what I've heard this evening. Thank you so much to everyone who spoke. One thing that was missed in Bill Ross's definition of when LAFCO land, and land is to be annexed by LAFCO, or whether Green Island Vineyard should be part of American Canyon or not, was, and this is just in the LAFCO policy, section five, general guidelines for determining spheres of influence. Land defined or designated in the county of Napa, general plan land use map as agricultural or open space shall not be approved for inclusion within any local agency sphere of influence for purposes of new urban development. So I just wanted to put that, put that out there. Our job tonight is not to debate LAFCO policy or determine whether Green Island Vineyard should be included in the city of American Canyon or not. Our job tonight is to determine whether we, we want to adopt the ordinance that has been proposed to us by the property owner, by the applicant, I should say, or if we want to allow the voters to make that decision. For me personally, I think we should allow the voters to make the decision because I'm not satisfied with the means of signature gathering in this instance. We've heard on several occasions from constituents and public comment via email about the lies that were being fed to our voters about this ballot initiative and how it's supposed to fix traffic. You heard that public comment again this evening, and how this is a city of American Canyon initiative, which it's not. And so the signatures on the ballot initiative, to me, is not an indication of yes votes. It's an indication of being lied and misled. So I think that we need to take this opportunity to allow the voters to become educated on what's really happening and give our voters and constituents information on what a LAFCO annexation means. I also wanted to say that Councilmember Mark Joseph mentioned that we can still do a 9212 report in order to push this out, but we really only have a couple of days to do that. Our deadline to Napa County registrar of voters is the 27th. Today's the 19th. So we don't even have a couple of weeks to make that happen without triggering a special election. And it's just going to get us back to the inevitable of making this decision between, A, adopting the ordinance as is without making any adjustments or corrections, or B, allowing the voters to make, sending it to the registrar of voters to put on the ballot. So I'm more inclined to send this to the voters. Frankly, I would rather take no action, but I don't have a choice tonight. So thank you. I wanted to thank our people who spoke in public comment. I really, really, really believe that it is, what's the word I'm looking for? Super important. That's not the word I'm looking for, but it'll suffice.
It'll work.
It's very important that you take the initiative and inform our voters of the misconceptions or the miscommunications that are put in the initiative, and we'll go from there. So thank you again. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's very helpful, I think, to purpose of the people understanding this, this process better. And certainly, there will be that opportunity going to the voters who have that very robust discussion and argument about it. Certainly, there are arguments in favor of, and those opposed to it are something we should all pay attention to. That's often sometimes in the pages of a voter pamphlet that kind of get passed over, I feel, sometimes. But this is going to be very important to this whole issue. Anything further from the council? Okay. Thank you all. Then we need to have a couple of action items here that we need to take care of.
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, a resolution of the city council of the city of American Canyon accepting the certification of the Napa County registrar of voters as to sufficiency of the initiative petition entitled, "An Initiative Ordinance to Add 157 Acres of Property Owned by Green Island Property LLC to the City of American Canyon Urban Limit Line and amended general plan to extend potential city industrial development."
I'll second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council. We have another resolution to-
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, a resolution of the city council of the city of American Canyon ordering the submission to the qualified voters of the city of, am I reading the right one?
The second one.
Yeah, okay. To the qualified voters of the city initiative ordinance, Measure J, relating to adding 157 acres of property owned by Green Island Property LLC to the City of American Canyon Urban Limit Line at the general election to be held on November 8, 2022. It's called, called by Resolution Number 22-46 and increasing the elections budget 110-1342160 by 50,000 to cover the estimated expenses related to the measure.
I'll second that as well. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council. I'd like to thank all the public who spoke this evening, both in person here at the meeting and those online as well. That's very helpful in terms of understanding this whole matter more thoroughly. Okay, moving on with our agenda. Next business item is number 15, water supply and demand update, enhanced customer portal presentation.
Hopefully, I don't have to put this back down for Jen. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening, staff, members of the public, Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director. Tonight, we have the water supply and demand update, as well as enhanced customer portal presentation. I have with me Water Systems Manager Dominic Patrick, as well as Communications Manager Jen Kastenbach, which I will turn over to Mr. Patrick now.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor, council. I'm here to present the customer water portal enhancements that we've been working on. You can find our customer portal at the Virtual City Hall website, along with our many water conservation and rebate programs. My Water Portal dashboard, we have our total earned coins. A customer can earn rewards in the form of, of coins they could complete by signing up and registering, when they click on links, when they update their account information. These are all things that help the utility communicate with the customer, and we will reward and incentivize our customers to do those things. News, a customer can stay updated. We have a dashboard that has a slideshow, and we could put in PDFs and announcements such as our drought emergency stage two. Inside the My Water Portal, we have My Water Usage. A customer can see current usage from 2020 and, and usage in the same month of the current year. Billing info, it shows customer balance due to date. Also, a customer can pay the bill clicking Pay Bill button. Setting alerts and notifications. A user could set usage alerts based on their own goal. Also, the user can access messages by the utility by clicking notifications. Also on the dashboard, Water Reduction Target. A customer can verify their water consumption, and if it's meeting the 20% reduction goal, comparing the year 2020. My Account Address. A customer can view complete address along with a Google Map system. Most Recent Usage Date. Here, the customer can see real-time data of their usage or average use of the monthly, monthly usage of their meter. Also, Water Allocation Calculator. This is one of the, another way folks could use the human health and safety standards set by the state for the 55 gallons per day, per person. Not all people can meet the 20% reduction for various reasons. This gives you a tool to put in the number of people in your household. It'll calculate and give you your target. My Daily Usage. My daily average use, a customer can view the percentage the percentage change and the average gallons per day in the past two billing cycles. My Water Score. A customer can compare their water usage in the last billing cycle with other similar types, other residential. Or if you're a commercial user, you can see comparing yourself to other commercials. You have top, which is our top water conservers and you, your average gallons per day and the average. So this person would be below the average, which means they're conserving water more than the average person. Also on the dashboard, we have important links, the social media links as well. Here we have Facebook, See Click Fix, the water conservation website from the state of California. The the customers now could also select multiple languages in the water portal. So inside the dashboard, we have a dropdown menu as well. And that dropdown menu, we have communication details such as your home, your mobile and your email address. Security details, user can change their security questions and answers. User could add accounts if they have multiple properties, multiple meters. User can set preferred way to receive bills, paper, paperless, or both. Track Usage. This is where a user could see the graphical representation of their usage. Their units of measure that they could read is in units, gallons and or dollars. Frequency is hourly, daily, monthly and by billing cycle. User can also see the reading of the meters if they have multiple meters. Hourly, daily meters. Usage Alerts. So this would be our third goal. So we have one, that is a 20% reduction which is a state and city adopted goal. And then we have our 55 gallon per person human health and safety goal. And then we also have your customized goal. Here in the usage notification, the user could use this form and select the meter number and provide daily or monthly usage limits plus the measurement as well. The user will be notified if the user exceeds their daily monthly threshold limit. Here in Comparisons, user can compare themselves to the previous year, compare with anybody in the zip code, compare with everyone would be comparing everybody that is served by the utility. Again, that's per residential as a customer or per commercial. Here View Bill, Pay Bill. Account Information, Meter Number, Balance, Billing Period, Due Date and Total Water Usage. Payment Details, Consumption Charges and if any other charges are applicable. Customer can view bill in a PDF form. The customer could also view billing history. In this PDF form, you have an account number, a bill date, a due date, amount due, usage. And you could look back as far as January 2020. Notifications. Here from the top right of the screen, the user can select Settings and will be directed to Notification Preference Screen. Here the user can set the preferences of receiving email and push notifications from the Water District Agency. The list of notifications are Leak Alerts, My Usage Notifications, Water Reports per billing cycle, Utility Connect Messages, My Account Updates, and then the last is Quiet Hours. A customer can select hours of the service alerts. Also with the presentation here, I want to announce that the My Water Portal will also have an app. So we have an app with this customer portal. There is a lot of studies out there that show folks are using apps more than they are using browsers. So it'll be fully transparent and hopefully gain momentum and also every time you click on that app, we are collecting that information and we would like to incentivize you by giving you those coins. I'd like to turn it over back to Felix at this point.
Tell me about coins.
Yeah, I'll touch on that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Patrick. So I want to point out that this has been something that we've been in development for some time now. What the goal here is, it was like a one-stop shop for our customers. Being able to not only monitor, you can see all the increased enhancements in monitoring their water usage, but also connecting with the city. We currently have staff that are beta testing. We are going to push this out to members of the council for beta testing as well and we can get some feedback. We do intend to launch early August where we do a full launch to our customers. Again, after we get some of the beta testing and the comments back and things that maybe staff and council want to change or some things that they like, they want to highlight. So we can, we're just fine tuning it. Again, as Mr. Patrick said, we do have an app. It's currently only supported through the iOS, so Apple. But we are working on the Android as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen now. She's going to touch on our outreach to customers and how the process is going to work.
My gosh, it's tall people. Here, I'll only go that far, but I really look small now. Okay, so I'm going to start with the app is, I'm going to be providing you an update tonight on the drought communications that we've been doing. But I'm going to start with this water portal. So as you know, we've been messaging like crazy, handing out flyers, trying to get customers to sign up for the water portal that we currently have. And we've ran into some issues in the ease of people signing up for that. It's just very finicky for customers to use. And so I wanted to recognize the AquaTrax team. We have Emmett Shana, I hope I said that properly in the audience with us. That's the company that Dominic and the team are working with to develop this app. They've been extremely responsive to all of our suggestions and ideas which have been collected from the feedback from council and from the community. So some of the enhancements as far as outreach that really make a difference is that being able to tell people the 55 gallon per day calculation. It's been very difficult for our team to explain to people the 20% reduction and what does that actually look like? What do you, like, it's easier for people to look at, what do you actually want me to use? So that's going to help us really get the messaging out clearer. And that was a special design request that they put together for us, so that was fabulous. As Dominic mentioned, the increase in the reach through the app is going to be a great thing for us as well in spreading the reach on this program. And again, the customer signing up, that's huge because if customers have a difficult time signing up, they're not going to use this program and they're not going to have an awareness of how much water they're using. So now to touch on just water conservation in general. We have our campaign website, which is cityofamericancanon.org/savewater. We recently did a rebrand of our messaging for this, I'm going to say continued drought quarter, year, whatever we want to call it, continued situation. So we're using the desperate image of Lake Orville that the state of California is using. So part of that was to be consistent with the state with that branding, but also it's a very compelling image when people see it. You don't realize how dry those areas are and if people aren't aware, Lake Orville is part of our water supply, where our water comes from. And there's a very cool video on our website that you can watch about where our water comes from. So since I last reported, we've rebranded that. We have sent out a mailer to all doors in American Canyon, every door delivery mail in English and Spanish with the basically updating people on the regulations and the continued drought conditions and offering information about the tools that we have to help people. We're in the process of, no, excuse me, we actually completed our partnership with all of the jurisdictions within Napa County on a billboard that you'll now see on Highway 29. That's near South Kelly Road southbound, so you're actually coming back from Napa to see it. Let's see, sorry. So we're going to be using that same design to continue that partnership with our jurisdiction partners in using, I'm sorry, in installing signage in bus shelters throughout the county. And NVTA also has some of the messaging in their buses, including here in American Canyon. We're in the process of getting a water bill inserted together, so that'll be just, you know, a third page insert into our water bill. We're continuing on with our text message bill. On the top of the bill, there's a little just text piece that we can put there. And we're also designing truck magnets for our city vehicles to help remind people that we're in a drought and refer them back to the site. And finally, we are continuing our social media campaigns promoting the portal use and best practices and regulations. And that is all that I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to questions and comments.
Questions and comments. Really impressed with how active we are with the conservation side of things. I report out, let's be part of my committee report, North Bay Watershed Association. It's all of, we're in Sonoma, Napa and Solano County. Some of the cities there are going wild with American Canyon. You know, it's just, I think we have a very aggressive, very effective way of conserving water. Like the visuals, I mentioned the recycled water program, I was talking with Mr. Hawley the other day. It's probably something on the order, we expect six acre feet. What's that look like? About that water tank on a hill, that's about three acre feet, so two of those. So those visual representations I hear really help communicate that message. All the barrels in front of the houses certainly communicate it, just my being there. Pierre Washington, Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first, I liked the presentation that you did, Dominic. I appreciate the visuals of how to find the locations. I've actually used it myself. And the other day, I benefited from it because I had a nozzle that was leaking and it started leaking and I got a an email that said, I thought it said Damo. I thought it was Dominic. But it was Do Not Reply, but it showed on there that it was a meter for Washington and it was something about my water. So it made me go out there, kind of do a little research and I saw that we had, you know, a higher spike in our water usage. I'm glad it wasn't you, Dominic, that hit me up because I would have been embarrassed, but I corrected. But I think it's a very good portal, you know, it's very, you know, it keeps you mindful of your water usage, you know, and so I thank you again for your presentation and just even putting this out together. And I'm communicating to people when I visit with them about the portal, so I think it's great.
Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, I want calls from Dominic when my water goes up too, so get on it. Cash for Grass, what happened to that and why aren't we promoting it? And can you get three of my neighbors to switch out their lawns?
Yes, Councilmember Oro, we still are receiving applications. We have Pam Phillips is the Environmental Division right now and unfortunately she's on vacation, but we're still processing those. We have other staff that are picking those up and we're continuing that outreach. Unfortunately, in that Environmental Division, we are very short-staffed and having only one person in that division currently.
Do we have any numbers of people looking for cash for grass? Are we dozens or just a handful?
Currently, I believe we have three applications in the queue.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know how you want to staff that, but I would encourage that, like if we can convert more of these lawns. You know, like, you know, I have neighbors who are watering grass. And then every now and then they'll forget that the water's on for a long time and the whole street's guttered and it's just, you know, it's they didn't intend to do it, but things happen with those sprinklers sometimes and, you know. We push that a lot harder. I think there's an acre feet we could save across that if we did it over the summer, who knows? Would love to see that, more of that.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Oro. We are in the process, starting that recruitment process for the Environmental Division and we are making an effort to get out there. And in fact, we have some other commercial customers that we've discussed some possible to bring recycled water to them, which, connecting them, so we're getting permanently and they're currently on temporary portable meters. So we're working on that as well. And Mr. Mayor, earlier, I didn't forget about you, your question about the water coins.
Yeah, of course.
The way that, the way that we came up with a water coin was Mr. Sharma's brainchild, so Mitch Sharma is a great team member of ours, but what we thought was, we have, I've talked with residents and the way that our rates are, we have tiers. So if people are in the base rate, you pay the base rate. So just for example, if the base rate is 100 gallons and you're using 50 gallons, you're still paying the base rate. And this is something that has been, this is not just here, this is in my career, I've heard this. And so the way we incentivize that is we say, okay, if they're at the base rate and they're using less than whatever that base rate, if it's 100 gallons and they're using 50, we're able to apply water coins and what the water coins are able to do is get them into, get them into raffle, okay, right? So I know that Jen is doing some raffles, so it automatically enters them to raffles. Really, the sky's the limit with what we can do and how we apply those water coins, but it's incentivizes it to get folks to not only sign up, but to conserve water. And there are different things, criteria that we can, that us staff can control and how we which categories we pick. So that's what the water coin is. It's, it's, really allows us to incentivize that to promote those people that are conservation champions, which, again, the sky's the limit. We have a lot of ideas on how we're going to do that and how we're going to reward those folks.
Yeah, I think in my industry, they call it the gamification of things. You gamify and people like to compete for, yeah. You get to get points or prizes or whatever and for doing good deeds.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I'm excited about the new and improved version, looking forward to being a beta tester or whatever. And disappointed that you're working on an Apple app and not the Android app, but as an Android user, I'm accustomed to the being a second-class app citizen, that's okay. I do look forward to the improved versions. I think it's a good app. I think what you're doing is very positive and helps to kind of reinforce the right behavior. I also like hearing that you're trying to expand the recycled water usage. I think, I think it's something we need to consider and keep brainstorming to figure out ways to improve the delivery and the expanse of that. And so I'm very pleased. I think there's great ways that this app can be integrated with other apps that we're doing, the See Click Fix. The more we can get people to sign up electronically or online to get their bills, to get their payments made, all of that streamlines processes, you know, above and beyond just what you're doing. It makes the finance department run smoother and so on. So I'm looking forward to all of this and that's all I wanted to say. Good job, even though we haven't quite, we're, I think we're only down 8% in terms of water use compared to last year, but looks like we have the water. I guess I've just inadvertently moved this over to the actual water usage report, but but I think this is exciting and as soon as I can sign up to be a beta tester, I'll be happy to.
Thank you, Councilmember Joseph. The Android portion is not, we're working on it, right? We're going to get there. It was a little more difficult to work through those, those things which Emmett is working on. And any other questions about the water portal, I will let Dominic speak to the Water Supply and Demand Update.
Is that going to the 8% point there that he was talking about?
Yes, Councilmember Oro.
I'll let you present that and then I'll come.
Okay, so.
I just have a quick question. I'm not sure if you can see my hand, Mr. Mayor.
No, I can't see at all, sorry.
Well, I'm here.
Questions and comments. But yeah, I can't hear you, Vice Mayor, so.
Excellent, thank you. Just a quick question. Thank you so much for the app. You know, I get super excited whenever we have awesome apps at the city because I feel like we're. You know, I get super excited whenever we have awesome apps at the city because I feel like we're, we were super behind on this, so thank you. Just a quick question, are we still delivering recycled water?
Yes, we are delivering recycled water. I don't have the most recent schedule at hand on me, on hand, but we will provide an update on that schedule. Are we delivering recycled water yet?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, there you are, Vice Mayor, okay.
Very easy.
Okay, with that, I'll turn this back over to Dominic for the supply and demand update, and then we can take questions on that. Thank you.
Supply and demand update. The city has an 8% reduction on total water consumption. This June, the city and the city's facilities reduced their water by 23%. Residential, this June compared to June 2021 was 1%. Commercial was 0%. And other was a five acre feet increase, 32%. This year, we're trending very similar to last year's trend, in which the city reduced 14% overall. So we are still not on track for our 20% reduction. This is partly why we've added enhancing the tools within our customer portal, and we have the recycled water being supported by a delivery.
The other category, what is it and any reasons for why it jumped so dramatically?
So typically, the construction temp meters are going to be used higher in the summer months, less than the winter months, when those construction or when we're in the winter months where the construction slows down.
But can't we almost require that if they're using any temporary for construction use that they have to tap into a recycled water, or is?
Where there is recycled water available, we are, and we've looked in, we've even recently had made contact with an outfit to make the pickups at the WRF. We do plan on putting those temp meters on AMI, separating them out from the private fire protection services, and that'll allow us to have more insight of what water's going to where.
Okay, and then I thought other is also the loss and leaks and things that you, it's kind of like, there's the things you know that are other and then the things you don't know, so that's kind of a...
No, the water losses would not be included in other because this is a segment data that is metered and billed.
Okay.
Councilmember Oro.
Yeah, so context on that water. Last year, we asked people to reduce water, correct?
Correct.
And so like the 8% residential water, we're not getting to the 15 to 20% that we want, but that's 8% less than the 15 that we met last year? Is that, is that a way to think about it?
That is a way to think about it.
Right, so, so we're asking residents to take even less water than they took last year, which is a year that challenged us to do that, and so we're making improvements there. You know, it's one of these things, it's the law of diminishing marginal utility, right? You take a little bit too much of it, it's getting harder and harder, you're not enjoying it as much. And so, you know, we've got to commend particularly our residents for actually reducing it, and if you add those two years together, we're way over 20%. Now, that's not going to say that we cannot, I think the people that are using less water are really using less water. That's why I asked about cash for grass, because the people that aren't really thinking this through are still using normal amounts of water that they would have done in the past in an abundant year.
Yes, to your point, we had good reductions in 2021 compared to 2020, and it's going to be harder to meet the standards higher, essentially. And that's why it's also important that we enhance the customer portal to allow folks to see that they're doing their part and that they're good work, whether it was back in 2015 or whether it was last year or now, that it's being recognized.
No, and I agree, we need to do that, but I'm thinking that all the coins are going to come to me and Mark, right? Because we're using recycled water bins and anything like that, right? We've got to find a way to reach the people who aren't doing the recycled water, who still have the green lawn in the front of their yard, even though, like in Vintage Ranch, it's like 20 feet of grass, right? Nobody's playing frisbee on that thing, turn it into something else, right? You know, we got to reach those people because they're just sucking up water.
Duly noted.
What's the reservoir look like for Lake Oro? Any capacity?
I don't have it in this report.
But, yeah, some.
I believe it's below 70% of normal.
Yeah, I was impressed with some of the national news. They actually did Lake Mead, I grew up on the Colorado River, south of that. Lake Mead is virtually empty. Lake Powell dropped, this was about three weeks ago, 174 feet. So the basin has just got a trickle in it. Parker Dam below Hoover Dam is the water supply system for Los Angeles, the aqueduct. So certainly California is certainly feeling, Southern California really feeling the hit on that. And the national weather forecast doesn't really look like we're, El Nino is still circulating off the Pacific coast, so till that moves, we're not going to be, see any great improvement in what we got.
Yeah, that's why that no impact report is very vital to those water resources.
I think I was talking with Mr. Holly the other day about that. It's seemingly a weird cycle now. What hit us in October? Torrential rain, then drought, then another torrential rain. And then, you know, where you usually expected it to come in during the year, it just seems to be off track. But it's probably a bigger matter that we have to address in terms of what's available, what do we need to conserve? To Councilmember Oro's point, how do we get people who are not participating to take up the responsible course of action? That's how I'd characterize it.
Mayor, to answer your question, I just linked up with the California Department of Water Resources website on my phone because I was interested in Oroville. It's at about 44% capacity right now of its total capacity, which for this time of year is about 62% of where it normally would be in historical average, so. It's actually trending better than where it was last year at this time, but not as full as it was in 2020.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, excuse me. I just wanted to reiterate Councilmember Oro's comments. We do need to beef up the cash for grass, the toilet retrofit, these other efforts, just because I think the portal is great, and the more you know what you're using, the more you can manage it a little bit. But at the end of the day, you know, a lawn sucks up water, like it or not. So the more we can swap those out, and presumably that we could integrate some of those programs into the app itself, you know, everybody has ads when you're looking at an app. So we could have our, you know, cash for grass program, click here, or retrofit, or, you know, half dozen other things that kind of internally educate the user by virtue of an ad spot.
Landscaping designs, you know.
Yeah, a lot of that, so that, you know, in effect, you're not bugging us with real ads, but you're bugging us with the internal services that you get for your water bill, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I could speak to it real quick, Councilmember Joseph. We, the app does allow that. We have a splash screen on top. It has the drought information, reservoir levels. Mr. Holly, they're also on our webpage, so we have the information out there, and to that point, we can even include reservoir levels on the portal. So we can add things to it once, once you get an iPhone.
Maybe.
Well, we have beta tested, and you see, in fact, after the meeting tonight, I'd be happy to show it to you. And also, Councilmember Joseph, to your point, with the other category, where we are making, we're making a really big effort to get those temp meter folks on recycled water. When we saw that number, we, we knew there was going to be questions, and also with Director Smithy's through the construction projects and getting folks to come over. In fact, we have more people coming to the WRF to get recycled water, and we're only going to expand that. So we are working on that.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how that compares to household water usage, the amount they're using. This represents how many houses, this many acre feet, yeah. Okay, anything further from council? Thank you very much for the report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council, and thank you, staff and our friends at AquaTrucks. Thank you very much.
Moving on, we have, see, item 16, voting delegate and alternative for the League of California Cities 2022 Annual Business Meeting. Long Beach this year.
Thank you, Mayor. Teresa and I were just debating who's going to take this item. I guess I'll take it. I lost that one. So coming up in early September, Cal Cities is having its annual conference. This item is to appoint the delegate and alternative for the voting at the annual business meeting. I myself will be in attendance. I know a couple of you will also be in attendance at the meeting. Traditionally, the mayor has served that role as the delegate, and then the council has also appointed an alternate, but are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
If I'm there, you get to go home earlier, because I have to stick around voting at the last. You can head for the airport sooner.
Not it.
Wait a second, is that?
I'm not going. As you know, it is an election season, and I don't go to these during an election season.
I don't think I've signed up for it yet either, and Long Beach is not an incentive, sorry. But I'm in campaign season, too, so if it were closer like Sacramento, I might give it some thought, but flying to Long Beach is just not a good idea in general. So I'm not an option.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not planning on attending either. I don't have childcare in early September. If it was in late September, I could, but I'm not planning on attending either, so I guess not it.
Okay, so it's down to Councilmember Washington, isn't it?
Well, because I have such a demanding day job, I'm not available. That's probably the time that the FDA is probably going to be the most at my sight, so. I don't have the availability to leave, yeah, to leave, so I apologize.
Well, I'm already, I'm already signed up for it, so happy to represent the city, but knowing that we may not have an alternative.
Can we make the city manager, if he's attending, make him be the alternate?
Do you need two? You need one and an alternate?
No, you just, no, you just need a delegate.
Sure, he wants to get home early, too.
I nominate Mayor Garcia to be the delegate to the League of California.
I'll second that. Motion, second roll call, please.
Okay. Okay, let's see those. Oro and, let's have. Okay, Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas.
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council. I'll give you a report back on all the happenings. There's usually some good legislative items there, and in some years, there's quite a spirited debate. All right, moving on, city. Just a second, going back one more.
We've run the management updates.
Management staff oral reports. Mr. Holly.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a couple of updates. Erica, Jen, Rick, and Ally, actually, Ally already kind of covered her updates earlier, so it's really Erica, Jen, and Rick.
Good evening again. I'm happy to report that the Ucliptus sidewalk gap closure project is underway.
Notice that this evening, coming over.
There are, we may have to shut down Teresa completely, except for the really local traffic because people are still going around the closed signs, not kind of respecting the local detour only. But they plan to be on, be done in 30 days, so they could be mostly done before the school year starts, and then they'll work with the school between the school hours. But we're very excited to see the potholing started yesterday. Today, they started trimming up the, grumming the tree in the corner at Teresa, so I'm happy to report that. We have all the agreements in place, so we're good.
All right.
Teresa Smithy, what about the rest of the street paving throughout the city?
We had a pre-con last week for our citywide paving project. It's anticipated to start August 15th with VSS's schedule. We'll start with the flat work first, which is our concrete, our curb ramps. In addition, the recycled pipeline project, while they were awarded the contract, the anticipated delivery date for the recycled pipeline, C900, it's a long delay, working out November for delivery, but if it comes in earlier, we'll start sooner, so.
And then I heard staff got to see Watson Ranch and some ADUs this week, is?
This Thursday is a planning commission special tour. I'm not sure if it's open to others, but there's a tour of watching the.
Have you been out there recently?
Yes.
Looking good?
Yeah, and the aerials, there's going to be a website being delivered. I don't want to steal anyone else's thunder. Mr. Cooper, Director Cooper would like to respond, but there will be a web-based product showing the online progress to date. They have live video out there, so it's pretty impressive to see the aerial drone images that are coming out. So stay tuned for that. We'll share that with city manager Holly when we have a website available to share.
Thanks.
Before you go, though, Knightsbridge, I think it is, that's getting repaved, yeah, along with the little cul-de-sacs. Is that this year or next year?
We were hoping to design this year, as we've got a lot of projects that are already going underway right now, so design would be this, this coming year with construction hopefully next season. It seems like a pretty straightforward process. It's just staffing permits.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
G D, Mayor and council. So Jen Kamensback got to play, got to play police chief earlier, so I'm going to play Jen Kamensback and police chief. I just want to throw a plug out for National Night Out.
Yes.
It is Tuesday, August 2nd, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Currently, we have 10 block parties signed up. So obviously, we're still recruiting for more people to sign up. To do that, you can go to the cityofmariancanon.org/nnO, and there's a link to click on, and it'll walk you through it. And then from the police side as well, please denounce on Thursday this week, Officer Jose Pinedo is going to be receiving a Mother's Against Drunk Driving Award down in Danville at the Black Hawk Museum. So myself and his sergeant will be attending. So it's awesome. It's the Bay Area mad organization that is going to be presenting it to him.
Congratulations to him, and he does this an honor by receiving it. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's it for me.
Anything further, Mr. Holly?
No, Mayor, that's all we have. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to mayor council comments, committee reports. After that, we'll take up future agenda items. Councilmember Joseph, anything further to add to your report?
Other than I did get an opportunity, I don't know if I.
Microphone. Thanks. I don't know if I included it in my report. I did get a tour of Watson Ranch from the developer, and it is shaping up nicely, and I think the affordable housing units are basically being stacked up and assembled as we speak and everything. So that project is moving ahead rather rapidly and on, well, according to Terry, it's a few months behind, but from, you know, our perspective, that's lightning fast, so I'm impressed. I think it's going along well.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington, anything to add?
Nothing to add, no.
Okay. Councilmember Oro, anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add, but I did have a question on Councilmember Joseph's report. Thank you for the detailed report. In there, you talked about the Juneteenth money, and I don't know if that's going to come back to council for discussion, or does that just happen with staff and the Arts Foundation?
You know, with my, wearing my American Canyon Arts Foundation hat, our position is it's up to the city. We can cut you a check to reimburse you, we can keep it a seed money. It's more the city's decision, whether that's the manager's decision, the council's decision, whatever. So it's kind of, it just shows you how flexible and responsive the Arts Foundation is capable of being.
I appreciate that, and I'll take the guidance from the city manager on how best to handle that.
We are receiving a presentation. I did talk with Brendan Knight last week, and so we've got her queued up for August, whatever, the second date of the meeting. August, that would be August 20th, 16th, sorry, getting my dates confused. August 16th, she's going to come and give a presentation and kind of a wrap-up on that, and we can talk about it at that point.
Okay, well, it was a very successful event, and certainly, nobody knows how to manage a budget to maximize the effect. the budget to maximize the effect economically. Very good. Anything further, Councilmember Oro?
Mayor, you forgot about me again.
I'm, I'm getting to you, because, see, he's on my left, and you're on my right. Anything to report, Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Um, yeah. I actually, I got a tour by the developer of Watson Ranch too, and he told me the same thing, that they're running behind schedule. And I was like, are you kidding? This is like moving so quickly, I didn't anticipate to see roads yet. Super cool. Just a couple of dates I wanted to put on the council's radar, since we were talking about the League of California Cities. We have the North Bay Division meeting on August fourth in Petaluma.
Yes.
And that's going to include the election of officers. So they're looking for vice president, second vice president, and board director. I don't know if anyone has signed up yet. I hope that you guys can make it. There's also Bachi Ball in Yountville on August twenty-eighth. So I don't know if anyone signed up for that either. As you know, that's a fundraiser for the California League of Cities. I believe they're doing a special, like, discount this year. If you're on the executive committee and you bring a friend, somebody gets hooked up. So if you want to go and you haven't paid for your tickets yet, please call me. And that's really it for tonight. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Yeah, Bachi's, uh, well, let's, we'll get out there and practice, you know?
I feel like Mark should be there for sure, because I think, Mark, you were doing Bachi regularly for a while.
We've, yeah, I think.
I've never played, so if I go, I have no idea what I'm doing.
Well, neither do I. I only come home with first place a couple of times. That's all. I think the mayor cheats, but that's another story. It's all in the wrist.
Is it just me, or does he win something at every event?
No, that would be the, the bear's wife. She's notorious at that. With my report, I just like to reflect, it's been great to have this summer break for all of us. Anything else?
Yeah, I forgot something. Fourth of July.
Yeah, yes.
So I, I've gotten so much feedback on the Fourth of July. You guys know that it's like one of my favorite events every single year. That and smores and meteors. For, I've gotten a ton of great feedback. I keep on hearing that the American Canyon Firework Show is better than any other city around. Firework Show was super impressive. A lot of positive feedback about the stage, the location of the stage, bands. I did get quite a bit of negative feedback about moving the parade to a different location, or starting it at American Canyon Road instead of Kimberly. And I explained that that was so that we don't impose on the residents that live on Kimberly and don't get in their way and block their street. And the, the response I got was, but it's tradition, and you don't mess with tradition. And, and honestly, Fourth of July in American Canyon is one of our biggest tradition, and it goes back to, you know, as far as I can remember, and I've lived here since I was two years old. And the other feedback about the parade was having it in the middle of the, the day is the reason why several floats didn't, or several participants didn't participate. I guess residents seem to enjoy the lull in the middle and just like spending all day together in Community Park Two and having the parade in the morning. And it's just, this is the feedback that I've gotten. I don't know if anyone else has gotten any other feedback. I just wanted to share. I promised, this was probably like four or five different individuals, so I promised them that I would share this with the council this evening.
I've had some similar feedback from a few people on that. I think by and large, folks I talked to really enjoyed it. Yeah, there's probably some logistic issues to address, but I think what we hear every year is people on Kimberly, they can't get in and out of their driveway because of all the staging that goes on. But I think by and large, everybody really enjoyed it. I was there across the street from Community Park Two to observe, to enjoy the fireworks. Actually, was over there wandering around, caught up with our sheriff, our tease, out there. Were in line to get something to eat. I think it's one thing I did suggest, and I think I mentioned it to, was it, no, it's, yes, the director Akita there. Need a pavilion to sit down and eat. You know, you make a, a lot of these have just an empty space with a lot of tables. I'm sitting there with a drink in one hand and a plate in the other, says, okay, how do I handle this? So that would be one, you know, an improvement that could help a lot, I think. I did hear that from some folks. By and large, they're very positive. I just want to thank all the staff, both in parking wreck and public works, for all the hard work. I mean, I was there, I left the house I was at, our pastor's house, probably around midnight, and they were just finally wrapping stuff up. They put in a very, very long day, and very much appreciated. I just, it's awesome. So I just, I can't thank them enough. As a reward, I think a couple of departments got some random acts of lupia in appreciation. Both public works and, that's just our house. That's just our way of saying thank you, and we appreciate the work you do.
Mr. Mayor, just as a suggestion, this might be one of those hot polling topics that, that Polco talked about, that getting some feedback on the Fourth of July and the formatting.
Yeah, okay.
Because, you know, I've heard good and bad, and, and I have mixed feelings. I mean, so I, it might be handy to get more people's input on it. Thanks.
Now, a longer route might get our, more of our required steps in for the day.
I mean, one nice thing of the, of the later time, you know, all of our state and national, you know, the Bill Dodds, the Mike Thompsons.
Oh, yeah.
Who rarely show up at our events, you know, suddenly we got State Senator Dodd.
He'll show up, everyone he has to do is in the morning. He says, yours in the afternoon, and I'll be here every year.
Exactly. So there is some, you know, there's pros and cons to all of that.
Save a spot and a fire truck for him. Okay, that would conclude my report. Future agenda items, anything, council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I got one thing.
Councilmember Washington?
I know that we, all the council, have multiple committees that we're involved in. And I would like to bring to the, to the council for the future, just to, to talk about certain committees that we are assigned. And I particularly am assigned to one committee, which is the, the Climate Action Committee. And I have some concerns about the committee and going on with it. One, the time of day that the committee meets, and for the length of time, it's about a two-hour period during the day. And as you all know, I, I have a full-time job. I also like to bring to, to your attention that I don't totally agree with all the things that the, the Climate Action Committee actually talk about. And I have some concerns with the, the most recent grand jury.
Yes.
What was written on a report, and highlight some of those concerns as well. It's almost like the same people talking to the same people. And I like to have a committee that will gather some input from some of the other residents, not only of the county, but also of our city of American Canyon. I don't see that. So I find it difficult to sit through a meeting that I may not totally agree with everything that goes on. I'm not saying I'm against climate action, because I'm not. I'm, I'm supportive of climate action. I'm just not so supportive of the committee that I'm currently involved in. And I find that, I don't want to say it's wasting my time, but I just don't find the time, there's value in my time that I take away from my workday to attend these meetings. And I would just hope that we could probably get our committee together, our, our council together, to talk about reassigning the possibilities of being more effective on the committees that we are assigned to. And I like to be part of a committee that has more input from the city, the residents of American Canyon. Because I think that's what's most important about being in these committees, is finding out how we could, we could justify what we're doing at American Canyon. Some examples that I would give you is that we're imposing in climate action, in the Climate Action Committee, some lifestyle changes that I, I personally don't agree with. Some I do, some I don't. But there are lifestyle changes that I don't think that, that committee has the right to say what American Canyon is going to do without speaking to people from American Canyon. They're also talking about banning items that I'm not in total agreement with. So maybe this is not the correct protocol to do this type of comment, but I just think it's important to, to agendize this for us to talk about it in the future. Because I don't think anyone should have to be sitting in a committee that they feel that they're the foreign person in the committee, and no one really resembles what our city is all about, in my opinion. So I would just like to bring that up for a future agenda.
You know, I, I'd be supportive of that. First of all, I think there's two parts to that. I think it's committee assignments, which we do in December, right? So it's only a few months away, then we can revisit those. But I read that grand jury report too, and I think, you know.
I read it, and it, it just didn't speak well at all.
Yeah, and Councilmember Joseph.
Twenty nineteen, they haven't really achieved anything.
Yeah, so Councilmember Joseph, I know climate's a big thing for you. There's a heat wave going around the world. We're, we're in the most perfect spot to be living in in the world right now, because it's like, literally like eighty degrees. Everybody else is suffering. I'd, I'd be down for that. I, I would love to have a, you know, a climate talk and, and get it under, actually, it could be, it may not even, I don't know if it's an action or an update from you, but I, I would, I wouldn't mind putting that on the agenda.
I'd agree, I would agree with that. I think it's important for us to know what, what benefit we're getting. I think the thing that was most significant to me in the grand jury report is, what's the output? You know, they formed in twenty nineteen. Three years, they, what did they produce? One of the recommendations is two people from each jurisdiction, reduce it to one. I think it needs to go further than that. I mean, just, why was it formed? What are their objectives? What's the progress they're making on it?
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot to be discussed on that, and we can revisit that whole participation even. So I would love to bring that forward on the agenda.
Yeah. I think it's important to know that communities do have a voice, and they're participating. Have they ever met here in American Canyon? Do they know this community? And we've had visitors this evening who are very involved with, was that Vision 2050? I don't know how often they come to American Canyon. Some I have not, I knew when I was in, lived in Napa, that was twenty years ago.
And one, one of, one of the things that were brought up most recently is about the solar permitting process. And I actually think, I think you do, well, that we do, a very good job already.
Yeah.
From that standpoint. And to change it to accommodate what they want to do in North County, to me, it's just like, you know, well, you don't even take the time to see what we're actually doing that is successful here in our city. So that's why, you know, I find, I'm a process-oriented person, and I need to see, I need to see something that's moving forward. And I just felt like, you know, you have a bunch of people preaching to one another, and not including, making it inclusive. And I don't, I don't mean inclusive by just a, a word that we just use. I mean, truly make it inclusive. And I don't see that. And, you know, I, I've been in there for two years now, and again, not trying to mope, and I'm trying to put the city in a, in a difficult position, but I'm about making progress, and I don't see progress being made in this committee for me.
Well, I served on one like, that is WIC, I believe it's called.
I'm also involved in WIC.
Yeah, yeah. So I was there for two years, and in two years, they had one, maybe two items related to American Canyon. The rest of it was all North County. You know, they, when you look at the environmental issues, you look what this, this city has access to. Nobody's got this. How many acres we got at Duell? Right? How many acres we got down here at Wetlands? You know, how much access, fourteen miles of trail out there. I welcome visitors coming down. I mean, I run into, Ms. Iman, Iman, who spoke today? Yeah, I'll block them out on her name. That's, we were in Leadership Mountain Valley Class Six, now Class Thirty-five. That's how far back we go. And, you know, she really enjoys the area down here. Great, you know? I run into people at Wetlands all the time who are visiting from out of town, bring their bikes. But I don't know that that's recognized in places north of here who have all their environmental concerns.
So, so I guess my ask for you, Mr. Holly, is that I don't know if I make this a difficult challenge for you, or if you even, even understand where my persp, where I'm coming from on this.
No, I, it's, it's clear to me. We, we've talked before about this, and there is a response that's owed to the grand jury. The, the American Canyon has been asked to respond specifically to certain items in that report. So, you know, that is an item we need to bring back to the council anyway. And I think it's pretty easy to dovetail that conversation with a little bit of a bigger conversation as to, to, to what are we doing and what's the latest? And, and who's representing? I mean, it all kind of fits in that same bundle.
Yeah, a couple of things in that regard. If we have an alternate person that, you know, you could administratively swap out, if we had, I don't know if we did have an alternate on that or not, it'd be worth looking into.
I have to go back and look.
But in general, I think that committee has taken a long time to get off the ground, and I've complained about the failure to move the needle. I'm not sure what the answer is, because it doesn't have formal authority on the one hand, but it tends to not try to be really aggressive in getting things done. There's.
That would be evident in the grand jury, that would be evident in the grand jury report.
Grand jury's report, yeah, there's, it's hard to argue against the grand jury's findings. And I don't see them being that motivated. It is still a critical issue. You still are going to have to do things that we aren't going to enjoy. And I think there's a tendency to not move forward when you know the outcome's going to be ugly. But the alternative is uglier, and I think that's the issue.
I think, what, I think what Councilmember Washington is talking to, and I relate to strongly from my experience, we're being directed about doing things, and what's your raise, right?
Yeah.
But there's no participation. They don't know the community. There is no engagement with the community to say, this is, this is for our betterment.
Right.
We're directing you, this is what you shall do, because we're directing you.
A, they're not directing us, and B, no one's going to anybody's community.
Yeah.
They're trying to develop, what are regional approaches, you know? Can we, you know, agree on a certain standard across the jurisdictions?
Maybe that's why nothing's getting done, they're not going to communicate.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt.
Yeah.
The question is not, it's, this is not a time for debate. It's about putting something on the agenda. I'd like to.
Yeah, we're having that conversation. We are.
No, we're having a debate on what's going on with it.
You're right, you're right.
So we, we need to stop that and move forward. We've given the city manager direction for it. I don't want to be here all night debating something that's not on the agenda.
Okay, it's simple, yeah? We've finished our business for the evening?
Not really, because I would like to ask for something.
Okay.
And that is, at least to begin getting quarterly reports on the various projects that are pending, so that we get a sense.
Okay.
Very similar to what MBTA is doing on their quarterly reports, just as an information item.
Sure. All right. We can do that, whether they're agendized or whether, how we're setting up those quarterly reports, but.
One way or the other, it could just be a written report on consent, but something that gives us a, an update occasionally.
All right. Are we good? Thank you, council. We complete our business for the evening? We are adjourned.
Good night, American Canyon.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hi, friend.